Alrighty, so we have a little different lineup tonight. One of our council members will be checking in remotely. So clerk, please do the roll call, please.
There's no requests, Mr. Mayor, under roll call item A. So I'll go ahead and proceed with the roll call. Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Kern?
Here.
Councilmember Mackin?
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Here.
And Mayor Lentz?
Here.
Alright. Okay, so adoption of tonight's agenda. I'll entertain it first and second.
So move.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kern?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Lentz?
Aye. Okay, right along. Now I have awards and presentations. And we're proclaiming July 2025 is Park and Recreation Month. It's great to see all of you here this evening. So let me read this proclamation. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Brisbane. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas park and recreational programming and education activities, such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, environmental education, are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure that ecological beauty of our community, and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas the city of Brisbane recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now therefore be resolved by the Brisbane City Council that July is recognized as Park and Recreation Month in the city of Brisbane. In her to accept the proclamation is our very own Norine Leek.
Thank you so much. I'm honored to receive the proclamation on behalf of the team, but I do want to take a moment to acknowledge all of the folks that actually make everything that we do possible. There's a spattering of representation here tonight.
Absolutely.
Some of our rec leaders from camp in our after-school program, some of our lifeguards, a couple of Park and Rec Commissioners, a representative from our age-friendly task force. So thank you so much for the honor of the proclamation. And thank you to the team for all that you do, all of your hard work and positive impact on the community. We couldn't do it without you, so.
Absolutely. You guys make a great impact on our community. Thank you very much.
And we have a brief video to play as well.
Let's do that.
Did you see it already?
No, but I cry every year. Always coming. I have no tissues.
Wow, that was an excellent video. That was so cool. Norine, why don't you come on up and accept the proclamation?
So you invite the team up for a photo?
Absolutely, for sure. No, I wouldn't expect anything less than that.
Thank you.
Go. Come on up. Alrighty. We don't have to worry about Frank.
Frank, I know, being in the middle.
Frank's there in spirit. Frank's always taller than us.
Always bigger than us, no matter what.
Hi, Haruna.
He's ready, you guys.
Alright, make sure you got Frank in the picture, Caroline.
Okay, I'll come over here. Can you see me now?
Don't move.
Okay, one, two, and three. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you all for your work today.
Frank is larger than life.
Yes, yeah, literally. Alright, so. Alright, our next item on our agenda is oral communication. So if anyone in the audience or online wants to mention something that's not on tonight's agenda, tonight, right now is your opportunity. So anybody online, Caroline? I mean, Ingrid, excuse me? Who wants to speak under oral communications?
I see no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody out in the audience? Okay, well, if you feel like you want to speak later on, you have a second opportunity at the end of the program. Alright, consent calendar. There's a couple of items. One, that I need to recuse myself on, that's item F. And then Councilmember O'Connell, item G for you?
Yes.
Okay, so unless someone else wants to pull one of the items?
I'll make a motion to approve items C through E and H through, I guess?
Yes.
H through I.
And I'll second that.
Alright, roll call vote, please.
Do we need to do that now that we're not?
With Frank's.
Yeah.
Oh, because Frank's from, yeah.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kern?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And I'll be an I too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's alright. Now for the next one, though, I will leave the room. Mayor Protem, Mackin, you got it.
Alright, over. Okay. We're going on to item F, which is approval of the cosponsorship of Excelsior Running Club event. Could I have a motion, please?
I'd like to actually pull that for discussion, if I may.
Okay. So we're moving, well, okay, so let's, let's move on to discussion then.
Okay, I just have a couple of questions for staff. This is for Excelsior Running Club. Are they a, they are not a Brisbane charity, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so the reason that we are cosponsoring them would be?
We've cosponsored them for the past several years. And through the funds that they collect, they make contributions to Brisbane nonprofit organizations.
Do we have any records of what those contributions are?
I don't have them in front of me, but I believe they made contributions to San Bruno Mountain Watch. I don't have the dollar figure in front of me.
Okay. I believe that was the case at the beginning. I don't know if that's the case now. But what, what kind of cost do we believe that this event would be? It's just the public works for flagging? Or do we have other, it's just a $315 cost?
That's correct, for the overtime for public work staff to take down and set up the flags on visitation, and then street closures during the event itself.
Okay, and that has to be an overtime item?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. We've approved this for several years, just like you said. And, and so, you know, obviously this council is very familiar with this event. I would just say, going forward and for other entities that maybe we don't know as well, that want to apply for something like this, I think it's important for staff to have some kind of report after the fact of like, because it's a for-profit and part of the deal is that they're making a contribution, it'd be good to know, you know, in the application, how much and to what entities. And if they can't provide that because it's contingent on, you know, whatever the sales were, so to speak, that if they're in, that they give that to staff within 30 days. And then going forward, and then if they are applying again, then that information be included of what was donated last year. Because I think that helps. You know, we definitely, certainly, I would say, want to support events that are going to support our nonprofits, but we need to just be able to independently verify that that's happened.
Yeah, we can make that a condition of approval. And then if this comes around next year, we can include that information in the staff report.
Great, thank you very much. With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kern?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
And Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Okay, and we move on to item G. If you could please bring the mayor back in, would be appreciated.
We'll do a swap.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes.
The, I'm sorry, I always reverse it with this city. There was a little bit of discussion there when the mayor was out of the room and it did not pertain to the specific item that he was recusing himself from. So if you could brief the room when he's back, so he knows what was discussed, or any council member can.
Okay. We had a brief, we had a brief discussion about different sponsorships. And a request was made of Parks and Rec to provide more information with staff reports in the future. So we know exactly what, let's say there's contributions or any kind of interaction with Brisbane-centric organizations that event would have. So we have more criteria in order to make a decision.
Yeah, makes sense.
So, and just to add on to that, so that my ask was like within 30 days of the event, if it's a for-profit organization, but we're approving because they're supporting a Brisbane nonprofit, it'd be good to know within 30 days after the event's concluded how much they gave and to where. It's ideal if they can provide that upfront, but sometimes it's a portion of sales, so you don't know. And then if that event comes before us again next year, then the last year's item, the last year's amount will at least be factored into the application or the staff report. So we can gauge, you know, if it's a for-profit entity coming in and getting the benefits of not paying for certain things because our community nonprofits are benefiting in a certain way, it's good for us to attach a dollar value, so we know.
Yeah, no, I think that totally makes sense. Yeah, we should definitely be doing that.
So. Cool.
Yeah, I guess it could be part of the, the application.
Just on that last point, if I may, so that the minutes should show that this did not pertain to just the one item that the mayor was on for, it was a general discussion and staff direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Alright, so moving on to item G, approved cosponsorship of Zero Point Yacht Club Regatta. So I don't know if we really need a staff report for that. I'll take a motion to approve.
Make that motion to approve the cosponsorship to Zero Point Yacht Club Regatta?
Okay, so roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kern?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
And Mayor Lentz?
Aye. Alright, so let's invite Councilmember O'Connell back into the room, please. Alright, so our next item is the continued public hearing. Consider adoption of resolutions to approve the budget for fiscal year 2026 and 2027. So Tom, I have a question for you. So this is a public hearing. So do, do we need to open up the public hearing and close the public hearing after every department head speaks? Or can we open up the public hearing after the last department head speaks? And then close the public hearing after the last person speaks?
You can actually do it either way. Most folks I've dealt with do it the second. They open it once and close it at the end.
Okay, is that the pleasure of the council to do it that way? I see a nod.
That works for me.
Okay, great, then we will do it that way. So.
Can I just, before we get rolling, I'm, oh, good. Some of you are not feeling like you have to stay for the budget presentation, but I know some of you are here for the Park and Rec presentation. And while we love our budget, probably not as lively. So you will not offend us if you step out of the room. But if you'd like to stay, of course, you're welcome.
Alright, so Christina, you want to start us off?
It's a fun Thursday night. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. Christina Fernandez, your Assistant City Manager. I'm pleased to introduce the city's budget for fiscal years 26 and 27. Our budget reflects the extremely hard work of our staff and finance team led by Jeremy and Carolina in reducing our budget deficit. The budget presented tonight demonstrates our commitment to making smart decisions despite the increase in cost of doing business and reflects the need to ensure continuity of service through succession planning. And with that, I'll just hand it over to Carolina for her presentation. Thank you.
Right.
Thank you, Christina. Mayor Lentz, councilmembers. Thanks for, again, bringing us back for the opportunity to discuss the budget. Just wanted to remind the, for, for those that are viewing, that this was, we initiated the presentation at the last meeting and were asked to continue with the departmental portion. So with that, I'm also going to just give a slight overview of the, the covering report that went along with the, with the agenda packet. So between the two meetings, staff came across a few items or some events happened that came to our attention that we felt were necessary to adjust the, some of the department expenses that were being presented. So we just wanted to make sure that that's part of this presentation as well. So we'll go ahead and with the, the slides to the next slide. Okay, so just a slight summary of the budget process, again, for the benefit of viewers. And if this is the first round of folks attending a budget workshop. So the city is coming back to a tier-year budget for its operating budget, which happens on the even years. The budget itself is a guiding document to, to the city and staff on how we want to allocate the resources of the city. And these are directed through the goals set by council. Just a reminder, the annual budget is due on June 30 prior to the budget year. So for, the budget year starts 7/1/2025 through June 30/26. We have to have an approved budget per state guidelines, June 30/2025. So staff goes ahead, goes ahead and dependent on the goals of the council, develops programs to meet those established goals, determines the costs and what it's going to take in order to propose what their operating budget will be. Those proposals are reviewed by city manager individually. And then as a whole, they're aggregated to review the city's resources. And as he compiles with the finance director, we, the, the city managers presents the budget that we're proposing this evening. Council, today we are presenting to the council for your review and request for adoption. At the mid-year point, and in this case with a two-year budget, in between years, there is always an opportunity that we will be reviewing the budget and proposing at that time. If we feel there are any amendments that need to be proposed, we would raise them at that time. So tonight is not the end of it. How, we just want to remind you that there's always room for adjustment throughout the year. And then just a reminder, this does not include the capital budget as that is typically reviewed and presented to council for review in the odd years of a two-year cycle. Next slide. So at last meeting, we were providing the overall revenue and expense results for each year. And we're talking 2025, 26. And at the last meeting, we were proposing a fund use balance, balance usage, which means that the expenses were exceeding revenues of $1,023,000. But with the revisions that we were finding, we are now proposing, the revenue did not change, but total expenses were reduced to $32,178,000, roughly reducing that usage of the fund balance down to $901,000. Okay? And we will be reviewing the, primarily with city manager and then central service departments that were affected. And they will be providing that information to you. Moving on to the next slide. It also impacted the second year of the budget proposal, which is fiscal year 26, 27. So at the last meeting, again, there is no change to revenue. Expenses were $33,379,000. And we were proposing usage of the fund balance at $1,752,000. With the revisions for this evening, it's now $33,202,000 as far as expenses, which is again reducing that usage of the fund balance down to $1,575,000. Next slide. So this is just revisiting the trajectory of the revenue and expenses over the years, both in budget form and actual. Just a reminder that in 2027, or in 2026, we are expecting to be implementing a master fee schedule for council's review. And so there is an opportunity that some of these revenues will be adjusted. But until that time, we are proposing as-is of what we know now, what, how we project. So for the next couple of years, as you can see, the dotted line of expenses is exceeding the solid line of revenue. And however, if you look over the past few years, except for 2021, budgeted expenses, when it comes to actual, the solid bar is the revenue for each year. And you will see that except for 2021, that, I'm sorry, 2022, the revenue exceeded expenditures, even though perhaps it was budgeted in the opposite direction. Moving on to the next slide. I just wanted to kind of review how the fund balance budget policy were impacted by the revisions that we have. So this is just a reminder that the city, as part of its budget policy, has implemented self-restrictions on its own fund balance to plan for future events, whether it's a recession or some anticipated events are typically maybe storm-related or in earthquake country, we look at it perhaps for those types of events. Annual fluctuation is something that's tied, it's 5% of the revenue plus 5% of the expenses for that current year of the budget are set aside as well. So for a total, it was, wasn't significantly adjusted, but we're at $9.2 million as far as self-restrictions on our own fund balance. Moving on to the next slide. The adjustments combined are again at a $9.2 million requirement. Next slide is just a revisit of outstanding debt. And just to remind the council that we do have some debt falling off over the next few years. The most significant change happens in 2036, so in 10 years. And this is, these are principal and interest payments that we, we owe from the governmental funds. So it's just, just showing for future years what we can expect on how this will impact our governmental funds. The next slide. Our recommendations for the budget. Because we feel that the revenues are strong and that we have scrubbed as best we can on the expense side, looking at our operating costs of what's known. We are recommending that the council direct staff to continue to provide the necessary services. Actively fill open positions. Adopt the budget as we're requesting. And then finally, when we meet again through the mid-year reviews, that at that time, we can determine whether or not we are able to fund the pension reserve as we had designated in previous years. We're not recommending that tonight. We're not preventing or, or saying you can't, but we're not raising that as a recommendation tonight, primarily because we are proposing deficit as part of the budget. So it's up to council, but we definitely would recommend that we review that again come mid-year. And with that, I was going to put up next the department presentations unless you want something differently.
Let's see if any council members have questions for you, Carolina.
Okay.
Councilmember Mackin?
No, thank you, not at this time.
Okay. Councilmember O'Connell?
Not at this time.
None for me.
Councilmember Kern?
Um, yeah, Carolina, so we're not into the, the cost center presentations yet. I understand that piece. And so I've got my packet in front of me. Can I ask you questions about the, I guess it's the general budget at this time?
Sure.
So I'm on page 59 of my packet. It's attachment J. It's titled City of Brisbane Department Budgets. Under 6035, under transfers, we have something called vehicle replacements. It's a flat $300,000 in un-audited actuals and forecasted and projections. I'm just, can you just define what that is for me, please? And then just explain to me why it's flat, that's all.
Okay, so several years ago, instead of using current year operating funds to purchase vehicles, the city decided to create a vehicle fund. And by doing that is we set aside funds every year based off of the needs of the future, needs of the city, looking at existing vehicles, their lifespan, how much it's going to cost by the time you need to replace them. And we allocate, we calculate what the annual amounts will be. Typically, it's the general fund that contributes, the utility funds also contribute, and the marina fund. So these are based off of a schedule. And so what we're doing right now, because there are some changes or potential changes in requirements for vehicle for EV versus gas type vehicles, we are examining this a little bit more closely. But for the budget, we decided, let's go ahead and submit the amounts that we have so far. And as more information becomes known from the state and needs of the city, of how we can repurpose some of our vehicles, then we will provide more detail and perhaps adjust those annual amounts that we're requesting.
Thank you for that explanation.
Okay, you're welcome.
Can I dovetail on that, please?
Sure.
Yeah.
When we did this, we owned most of our vehicles. I know now some of our vehicles we lease. Does that affect how this replacement cost would be because they're leased, not owned vehicles?
It does slightly because of the cost. So we are paying for those leases through the vehicle fund. And so we do consider those pricing. We will be reevaluating that program as well to determine if it still benefits us. At the time, it almost was a wash. But now, depending on the needs of the city and the vehicles that we will need, and if the vehicles are even available through a lease program, then we can alter those adjustments, those calculations as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Carolina?
Yeah, one more comment. I'm going to dovetail on top of what councilperson O'Connell just asked. So Carolina, one of the things that we might be looking at going forward, I mean, this is a statement that I'm asking is in the form of a question, maybe I'm going to get it out for you, maybe not. But as we're going forward, I just read an article that hybrid vehicles and electric vehicles are far outlasting what they thought their usable lives were going to be. And if we start moving down that path, we could actually probably reduce this number. Is that a true statement based upon the need to, I guess, maybe a lower replacement rate on vehicles?
It will definitely be considered for the life of those vehicles. If they, in fact, do extend the life usage of the vehicle, then it will definitely impact the calculations that we provide to the other, to the departments and to the funds that will be replenishing the vehicle fund.
Mr.?
Thank you so much. I promise I'm done. Thank you.
If I could dovetail off what councilmember Kern just said. I've read similar articles and the batteries are lasting longer, the vehicles are lasting longer, and the computer systems are toast. So they don't really know for sure. There are major computer issues. So I hope they left that.
Really?
I feel like I have to.
Okay, if you must.
If I must. I, we still own a considerable amount of vehicles, though, right? So like, what percentage are we leasing? Because I feel like it's probably.
Well, it's only about a handful that we are actually leasing.
Yeah, so the majority is.
So like, the safety vehicles are owned. When we first looked at that program, the leasing then wasn't an option.
I imagine a lot of our public works trucks.
Right, we own.
As well.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. I guess if we're done dovetailing, we can move on to the first department, which happens to be us.
Yes, thank you.
City council. Thank you, Carolina. Hi, Caroline.
Good evening, Mayor Lenz. And honorable city council members. I am pleased to present your budget to start things off this evening. Next slide. Your budget covers all the tools and various means to set policy and represent the city, not to mention make budgetary decisions that will help guide us as your staff in carrying out the council's goals and decisions. Next slide. Your budget also includes funding for city events from our larger parties, such as the five-year, every five-year anniversary party will be 65 next year in 2026, to smaller council celebrations, as they may arise, are seen here on this slide. At your priority setting retreat in March, you recommended three priorities for fiscal year 25, 26. They are safeguarding fiscal health, which is continuing to steward city resources responsibly in light of recent budget challenges. Carrying for our community spaces, which is maintaining existing city facilities while developing a clear timeline to assess the future use of both current and potential sites. And thirdly, fostering community partnerships, building on Brisbane's strong culture of volunteerism by collaborating with local businesses and community organizations to deliver meaningful projects efficiently and cost effectively. With that, I'd like to walk you through the budget changes for fiscal year 26 and fiscal year 27. So the part-time history practice assistant was eliminated until needed. I do want to thank councilmembers Davis and Mackin for your assistance with turning the history room in the library into more of an exhibit space this past year. And we've been able to manage changing the display, which right now is for David Schooley with staff from the city manager's office and assistance from Public Works. In your roles, there are a lot of meetings, many of them in the evenings. So we're recommending council meeting refreshments slash working dinners increased by 1,500 to be more in line with actuals or reality of current costs. We are planning to have a, we were planning to have a facilitator at your priority setting retreat, but that was accomplished by your city manager. So that 2,500 amount has been removed in professional services. As for council celebrations, we are adding 1,000 back these next two fiscal years as that was inadvertently left out last year. The 1,500 for volunteer projects is seed money as we plan and incorporate council priority-related projects, maximizing Brisbane's already strong level of volunteerism. Lastly, travel and training is increasing by a modest 900 to take into account events such as council of cities that are hosted throughout the region each month, seeing an increase in registration costs. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
All right, so Frank, why don't we start with you? Do you have any questions for Caroline?
I don't have any questions on this, on the city council department budget at this time. Thank you.
All right, Madison, no, Terry?
No.
Okay. You are off the hook, Caroline.
All right.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to city manager, Christina.
Good evening again. Good with the. So good evening. The city manager's office provides leadership and administrative direction to implement the policies that you all set forth. I'm sorry, next slide, yeah, there you go. We recruit and retain high-value employees and are responsible for providing information and resources to our residents. Our budget in fiscal year 26 is about 1.9 million. And in fiscal year 27, it'll be about 2 million. We have six full-time employees and we are responsible for city administration, communications, economic development, and risk management. Next slide. So some department highlights this year. You all hired me, so thank you very much. And you also hired a fantastic management analyst. You all launched the Economic Vitality Initiative. Big thanks to Mitch Bull for that. We increased methods of communication to our older residents. It's my understanding that we're starting to be, we're starting to implement ideas in the Age Friendly Action Plan regarding accessibility. And we've also installed dark sky compliant lighting at the community park signboards and turned off the spotlights. Next slide. So some budget changes. There is the full cost, the full year of having an assistant city manager. We are also rightsizing Economic Vitality. It's my understanding that it was budgeted too low in years past. So just sort of making sure that we budget appropriately this year. We're also putting $5,000 towards one-time projects. And so my understanding for that is that it's for additional outreach and engagement efforts that might happen throughout the year. And then we are also decreasing our budget in professional services and memberships. And so with that, I'd welcome any questions you might have.
All right, so Madison?
I don't have any questions, thanks.
Terry?
No questions.
Pauline?
Just have one. Earlier this month, when we met, under the salaries and benefits, it was 36.95%. And maybe Carolina has to take this. That got reduced to 25.46. What was going on there that ended up with the reduction?
Okay. I have a high-level understanding of that, but I'll defer to Carolina.
Either one of you.
Yeah.
Hello? Yes, testing, okay. You're talking between meetings? Yes. So included in the salary and benefits are special assistants, which are retired and new interns that are on staff, as well as interns. And when we reviewed the hours that were assigned to the special assistants, it was determined that they would not be assigned to the city for as many hours as we thought originally. So that was drastically reduced, probably in half. And so that caused a reduction in the, in addition to the assistant city managers variance that added to the adjustment for total salaries and benefits.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, Frank, you have any questions for Christina?
Yeah, just one quick question. Thanks so much for stepping in for Jeremy tonight. I hope he's feeling better, Christina. I know you've only been on the job a matter of weeks now. This is just a quick question. Where is Civic Plus, where does that roll up into this budget?
Okay, central services, according to our communications.
Central services?
Yes.
It's a different department.
Oh, it is a different department. Thank you so much. That's my only question.
Okay.
All right, Frank. Thank you, Christina.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to city clerk, Ingrid.
Honorable mayor, city council. Ingrid Padilla, city clerk, presenting my fiscal year 26 and fiscal year 27 budget. So my very lean, 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 lean budget focuses on one full-timer and a part-timer, my office assistant. A lot of the areas covered by this budget is about council support, agenda administration, and records management. Next slide. Some of the highlights for the past year was hiring our part-time office assistant, Emily Wong. It seems like my department kind of helps foster and mentor a lot of staff members that become full-time staff members. So that was Carol Skivo. And before that, you know, we just want to make sure that Emily Wong is retained in our, in our office and within our organization. Also, please note that the council's support includes my work within the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Accountability Committee, the San Mateo County Equity in Government, and subcommittee support for the council. One of my big projects is to implement the Laserfish project within the city clerk's office. And this is an electronic records management system to keep all records in one secure, centralized digital repository classified by type and retention. So the long-term goal for that is to have paperless office and also to have AI available so that it makes all of our staff reports writings a little bit easier. Next slide. And the only difference within my city clerk budget is that every other year, there's an increase in election expenses, because that's when elections are held. So for this, for these budgets, these two-year budgets, there's an extra $15,000 for the November 2026 election expenses.
All right. Any questions for Ingrid? Start with you, Terry.
So the election expenses on the page 19, or page 71, depending on how you're looking at it.
Yep.
They're shown where?
Special department expenses, which is 5245. It's basically $30,000 for, that's budgeted for the 2026 elections.
Okay, so they're just rolled into special department expenses?
That's right.
And what constitutes the rest of the special department expenses?
So that also includes some of our records management work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Madison?
No questions.
Just one question. When the county puts a measure on the ballot, do we have to pick up part of that expense?
No, not for, not for that, only for our own ballot measures.
Okay, thank you very much.
Frank?
No questions at this time, thank you.
All right, thank you. And I have one quick question, Ingrid. So on the salaries, I know you said the full-time and part-time, but it also includes Angel.
A portion of, a portion of Angel's salary.
Got it, got it, okay. Thank you for verifying that.
Yep.
And thank you for giving your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to, Caroline, you're back. I didn't even see you move from the.
She's quick.
The counter over to this chair. Yeah, it's quick.
This is finance, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
More ways than one.
Adorable. Next slide, please. So the finance department covers a area of areas. Basically, we're one of the departments that serve all of the various other departments. So we cover accounting, financial management, budgeting, audit, cashiering, billing, payables, payroll, treasury management, business licenses, information services, which is IT, and risk management. We have seven full-time staff. And yes, we actually took part-time from, from city clerk and who is now full-time with our staff. So for the two years, you'll see the amounts budgeted. I just wanted to clarify that we have a headcount that is sitting in finance, which is the utility billing specialist. But her costs are actually covered by the utilities fund. So that's the note that you'll see on number of positions. Next slide. So as far as the updates and highlights, lots happened this past year. So for staffing transitions, we had our IT and systems administrator retired after 40 years with the city. So we thank Albert Doral for his services. So in the prior year, we had two. And in 2025, we had budgeted for two positions, hoping for some overlap, but we haven't hired anyone yet. But that, so for the. But that, so for the budget, you'll see one position was reduced. We also, the Office Specialist Recruitment happened mid-year when Carol came over. And we're constantly cross-training and offering project management training within our staff because of the various hats they have to wear. It's very crucial that the operations have to continue. Someone goes on vacation, extended leave, that somebody else is always, there's always redundancy in, in training to ensure of, of, that the operations continue. So our, one of our main functions is interdepartmental support. So there were several software implementations that happened in '25. There was additional budgeting and forecasting software items that we implemented and/or augmented in this past year. We had several grants and improvements going on. And then also as part of the Finance Team, we have a member of the AI Beta Group in order to test some of the functionality and how we can better use for our current operations. The next slide shows several implementations that we were supporting in this past year. The two big ones, Clarity, which is the permitting software for, that primarily with community development. Again, any implementation happening through, in another department that deals with either billing or, or some, some kind of tracking will, will be impacting our Finance Team. We have to be involved to make sure that the integration runs smoothly. MOLA was the other implementation that is from the Marina. True Comp and Clear Gov that you see on the bottom, those are more for internal use from the Finance Team, but it's, we're prepping basically so that we can provide better reporting, more real-time reporting to internal staff and then also uploading some of the, the budgeted and forecasting information as well as actual information onto our website as we're required to. So that's what the bottom two are. We augmented, we already had True Comp, which is Gov Invest, they changed their name. But we just, it was another year and of use. And then it's also as the rollouts, their changes and their updates happen, we have to make sure that we're training our team and implementing so that we have the best information available to staff and council. Moving on to the next slide. Just wanted to go over the variances that we had in Finance. So for Personnel, we are actually proposing several promotions in the coming year for succession planning, including, so the Finance, Financial Services Manager would become the Deputy Finance Director. An Accounting Analyst, a Systems Account, sorry, Accounting Systems Analyst role would be converted to a Senior Management Analyst. And then we have another Management Analyst recommended. And then again, the reduction for the IT and Systems Administrator because we don't need the overlap this year. For Non-Personnel, the major variances that we're proposing is to increase the budget by 50,000 in order to conduct a business license study. We were able to reduce some of our software costs by consolidating some of the software that we were using and eliminating some. So for budgeting and forecast, we were able to reduce almost by 30,000. The Master Fee Study was initiated in the current year, so we won't need as much in future years. So that is also reducing the budget by 55,000. And then we reevaluated our training budget and we're trying to prioritize local and virtual trainings to reduce our costs. We have several staff that require certifications and continuing education. So we're doing the best we can to keep those training costs down. Also, the software that we use is interstate, so some of their trainings are not local. So we try to be judicious as much as we can on who we're sending, where we're sending our staff to, but it's very important to maintain up-to-date information. But we were able to still reduce that budget by 13,000. So I will entertain any questions if you have any at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I need some clarification because I'm getting a little bit confused. So if under Finance, we find information technology, correct?
Correct.
Why under Central Services do we have EnSite? And also Website? So the, was that recent change? Because the 50,000 under EnSite, which the service was reduced to one day a week, that used to be somewhere else. Was that under Finance?
No, EnSite has always been Central Services because it, it supports the whole city.
Right.
But the, the salary and benefit for the employee that, that, for the, the staff that we employ has always been in Finance. And that stays in Finance, but the EnSite is in a different department as well as their equipment budget, and we'll go over that.
Okay. And previously, and I don't know if you, you addressed this, the, again, earlier this month, the number of positions was listed as eight full-time and now it's been reduced to seven. Is that because of the IT position?
No, that was an error because of the, yes, because of the, the IT that we reduced it. And I apologize that. We had it correct in one as far as the costing, but not in the headcount listed on the report. So we made that correction here in the slides.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, Terry?
So on your page 23, under Professional Services, Miscellaneous Audit Prep Services, you have the variances listed here and ongoing cost of 55,000. And that's reflected in the total prep, professional fees?
Correct. So the way it works is the fiscal year 26 variance is just the increase from '25. Right? And then '27 is the increase from '26. But we wanted to give you an idea of going forward. What is the true cost of that program? Yeah.
Okay.
And that includes the audit firm costs and a bunch of, we have to hire several external for that.
This is going to be a touchy question, maybe. When was last year our audits been completed and published to us?
It's been completed of, for '23, but it has not been published. So it's, it is in review currently, but the audit.
Auditors are reviewed by us?
By the auditors. So it's.
And when can we expect that?
So we are expecting by the end of the summer that they will be able to complete the final reviews. It's in draft form. We have drafts, audited statements that, or what, they call it non-audited, but they have been reviewed. And it's just components in order to, it, it's a final review. Work has been, okay, I'll take it back. There's field work that's done as part of the audit. That's all completed. The reviews, reports have been in draft and that's being reviewed right now. And so by the end of the summer is when we expect that it'll be final for your review and for publish.
Okay, and this is not the usual that's.
It is not.
Okay.
Yeah. So the typical cycle is by either December of the fiscal year, like end of June, you know, you should have it by December or January is usually what we're targeting for.
And once we get caught up, we will expect those to be happening?
That is correct. So they cannot do '24 until '23 is, is fully completed and published.
Okay. That's my only questions for now. Thank you.
Madison?
No, I don't.
Frank?
No questions at this time.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Caroline, thank you very much. So moving on to Human Resources, I don't see Abby.
Filling in for Abby today.
Okay.
Yeah. Hello again. So I am filling in for Abby Parteen, our HR Director. The city prides itself on being an employee-oriented organization and takes the motto, "Provide for Today and Prepare for Tomorrow," seriously. The HR Department provides excellent customer service and supports the needs of our staff and the community. Fiscal year 26 budget is about approximately 976,000. Fiscal year 27 is about 1.1 million. There are three full-time positions in HR and one part-time. Next slide, please. So this year, HR addressed three key state mandates per AB 2561, AB 1825 and SB 1343. These included reporting on vacancies, providing workplace sexual harassment training and reinforcing workplace conduct and safety policies. As it relates to recruiting, HR rolled out a new background check system called VeriFirst, which helps the organization move quickly and efficiently, efficiently in performing background checks. HR also introduced ISO Grad, an online assessment tool used to provide hiring managers with more insight on a candidate's skills and their fit for, for certain roles. HR also completed 14 new hire recruitments and 14 promotions this year. Lastly, HR is proud to partner with nonprofit Nova Works, which supports young adults from underserved communities, including those who may be unhoused, have disabilities or have juvenile backgrounds. This paid internship program is focused on career exploration and development, and we're currently working with the Marina Division to host an intern this summer. Next slide, please. So the first four budget requests are tied to the rising cost of doing business. A key request for the department is for a compensation study update. This will help get the city ready for upcoming labor negotiations and give us a clear picture on how our salaries compare to those in other cities and agencies. HR is also requesting a position upgrade in year two to support the city's succession planning efforts. Currently, the department doesn't have a higher level support for the Director. And with this upgrade, the Administrative Assistant would take on more foundational HR duties, freeing up the Analyst to do more higher-level work, including assisting with policy updates to stay current on the ever-changing labor and employment laws. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
All right, thank you. Frank, would you like to start?
Sure. Thanks, Christina, again. Just weeks on the job. You're doing a great job.
Thanks.
Under Professional Services, I'm just curious from Human Resources, what, what rolls up under Professional Services?
Carolina, can I defer to you? I don't have the budget.
Professional Services includes some legal. There are other CALOPS, Labor Legal Cost, the Comp Study, those are all rolled into Professional Services?
Thank you. No further questions. Thanks.
Madison?
So the significant difference between '25, '26 and '26, '27, is that the Administrative Assistant?
Carolina, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that the position upgrade is that the biggest cost in sort of the variance between those years.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Terry?
So perhaps I'm repeating the comment about the staffing converting a part-time to a full-time cost, but the 20% change is significant in that department? And that's not due to just the raises, that's due to the new assistant?
Correct, between the two years, yes. So we'll be moving from a part-time to full-time, it's not just the salary, but it's also the benefits that go with it.
Pretty substantial change. Great, thank you. That's my only question.
Thank you.
Colleen?
No questions. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Christina.
Thank you.
Moving on, Community Development. John?
Good evening, everybody. Again, Community Development, we cover the areas of planning, building and housing, which are all somewhat overlapping and related. The goal overall is to assist the council and the community in establishing community goals in regard to land use and the built environment and to help implement those goals as well by overseeing private development projects. Again, the overall budget as shown on the slide, 2.37 million this year, or '26, 2.45 million in '27, eight positions proposed. Moving on to the department highlights, next slide, please. As was pointed out earlier, we did roll out the Clarity E-Permitting System earlier this year, which was a pretty substantial effort on the part of staff and various parts of the city team to achieve that. Published a couple of draft DIRs for some significant private development projects, namely the Quarry and the Baylands. We were able to initiate the Community Engagement and Planning Program for 70 Old County Road this year as well. And we're also in the process of implementing the Housing Rehab Grant Program for low-income homeowners, which was, again, a very popular program in the community. So very proud of the efforts we were able to achieve this year. Moving on to new items, we have one item in particular. There's a new Office Specialist Position focused primarily on records management and office support. It's really twofold. One is we have data in a lot of different forms, and paper, various electronic forms and different databases. With Laserfish, we'd like to consolidate the records so they're all in a single unified database. So this position would be focused on record-keeping and management. And the other is more general office support is to allow both professional and technical staff to focus on those particular duties that they're paid for and not maybe spend more time on routine clerical than they do in their current situation. So that concludes my comments. Glad to answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you, John. Colleen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John, on page 29, Professional Services Planning Assistance, what is that actually? Are those consultants? It seems like it's too low. Well, maybe not too low for consultants. What exactly is that?
That would be for city-initiated work that we would require some outside assistance with.
Okay, so that's project by project basis?
Yes, it would be city-initiated. If it's private, the developer would have to pay for those services.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, Madison?
Can you give more clarity about what the MISC rate increases are for? Just like what's encapsulated in that section?
That's if we have a contract with a consultant. Typically, there's going to be a CPI, you know, annual raise of increase of rates. That's kind of those, those kind of changes typically.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Madison. I mean, Terry?
I'm gonna, on the Professional Services, in '23, '24, it was 1.1 million. It went down '24, '25 in the budget to 600,000. And again, down to $3,600 or 363,000. What is compromising that ongoing reduction?
That was the Clarity Project, the E-Permitting Program. That had a hit on the '23, '24 budget when they were actually developing the system. So that was that one-time hit. The cost of that has gone down. And now that we're in more of a maintenance phase, they're not developing the system. So that's why that number has dropped so substantially.
Okay. Okay. And in your, in your budget, in your employees, this is all salaries. There are no overtime requests?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question, if I may. John, I know in the past we were using outside contract planners. Are we still doing that?
Not for, not for city-initiated work, only for work that's paid for by developer.
Okay. Thank you.
Frank?
No questions at this time.
Okay. Thank you, John. All right. Moving on to the Police Department. Chief Macias?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. It's my pleasure to be present today to provide you the Police Department's budget. It's the mission of the men and women of the Brisbane Police Department, working in partnership with the community to provide highly effective and responsive police services. As you'll see, our first slide, our overall budget for '26 is $7,949,348. And '27, in fiscal year '27, it's $8,236,734. And this budget number includes 21 full-time positions, 16 of which are sworn, and five non-sworn. The areas that we cover are patrol, investigations, that includes our K-9 program, traffic and parking enforcement, records management, and code enforcement. Next slide, please. Here's the breakdown of our P.I., showing 73% of our budget goes to patrol services, 16 in administration, and 11% in records. Next slide, please. Our department highlights. If you recall last budget presentation, we had re-implemented our K-9 program. Well, I'm proud to report that our K-9 officer and our K-9, Ringo, have completed their training. And this is our first Malinois dog that we have, that we've taken on before. Our K-9s have been German Shepherds, and so Ringo has not disappointed. So they have completed their training, and we're excited for them both. The next thing we have is we've completed, completed our full digital encryption for our portable radios. And then one of our motor officers was selected as part of our San Mateo County's Multidisciplinary Accident Investigation Team, which we refer to as the MAIT team. And they begin, he will begin his advanced specialty accident reconstruction training very soon. So a little bit about MAIT. What does that mean? The MAIT officers are trained in the physics of collision analysis and reconstruction, kinetics, human factor analysis, vehicle dynamics, collision damage analysis, scene photography, the use of surveying equipment, and computer-aided digital design software. They're on call within the county. There's a team of, I think, right now, maybe 15 of them. And when we have a major collision, as we did in our community the last few months ago, we've had two, our officer will be part of that team when they get called out. And then the last thing is we completed the installation of the three additional ALPR cameras that were approved in last year's budget to cover all the points of entry in our city limits. Next slide, please. So now I'll cover the variances in my three departments. We'll start with administration. We increased our memberships by 600, and we added our, our code enforcement memberships. And so that got increased. Miscellaneous trainings was 1,120, and that was adding public records request training for the commander and additional training for our code enforcement officer. And then for the 1,550 is the Windows 10 security patch that we had to, that we have to handle in, in our car computers for a one-year replacement. And we also have to replace four of our laptop car computers. And then in Records Department, we have a few increases. Our smartphones, laptop lines, and cable services, and that includes our AT&amp;T SIM cards that provide the cellular signal to our body cams, car cams, and our router for our car computers. We added additional shredding for both departments, $150. And then the miscellaneous professional services, it was quite an increase. That includes increases in our contracts, and that's our dispatch services, our IT contract, our records management, county processing, and entering of our county warrants, and our contract for maintenance of our repeater and radio transmissions down to San Mateo Dispatch. And then we added some additional training, $3,720, and that's for mandated trainings for our record staff to comply with state and federal laws and Public Record Act requests. And then the only new item that you'll see in our budget is the request for a record specialist position. Now, this request has been long overdue. We're in critical need of administrative support in our records department. Over the past years, there has been a noticeable increase in both the volume and complexity of records processing. Despite the staffing levels have remained the same, we have not asked for any additional staffing. As a result, our current team of one records clerk is stretched pretty thin, and delays are becoming more common. Records plays a vital role in nearly every function of our department. They are the core support for investigations, arrests, court proceedings, and evidence. They manage public records requests, legal compliance, maintain data integrity, accuracy, and accessibility of our data. Records interface with the public, the prosecutors, courts, and other agencies, and ensure compliance with state and federal reporting standards and public record requests. In addition to addressing the current workload, this new position is an essential part of our succession planning strategy, as we have key personnel that are approaching retirement soon. Bringing on additional staff now allows us to invest in proper training, preserve institutional knowledge, and ensure continuity and a seamless transition when the retirement occurs. The additional position provides an opportunity for structured onboarding without the risk of operational disruption, and ultimately will support long-term stability through succession planning. The new position will have an immediate impact on workload distribution and efficiency and cross-training between the two record staff for continuous and seamless operation when one is absent or is in need of taking time off. The request is not just about filling a gap. It's about planning for continuity and maintaining high standards that our community expects. And then the last slide is going to be the variances in the Police Department. So there were a couple of increases. Our uniform cleaning, you know, services went up, $425. Equipment maintenance, and this is for our vehicles. That was a slight increase. That's $23,700. But fuel costs have gone up. Vehicle repair costs have gone up. Tire, tires have gone up. All of that has gone up. And so that increase is pretty much actual, more of an actuarial of where we are today or what the costs have been. Memberships have also gone up to $690. We added $2,460 for crime prevention. So that's more community outreach. We're starting to get back out involved in county, different county events, and that's the ability to be able to give things away to our Day in the Park, when we do National Night Out, Pink Patch. We do the Pink Patch. I think it's their annual, San Mateo PD does their annual giveaways, so we participate in that. So a lot of the events that we participate in the county, so we increased that by $2460. And then health and wellness counseling for our PD staff, BetterHelp, we increased that by $2,000. And I'm happy that my staff is using this service, taking care of our personnel's mental health and well-being is our top priority. And then the last thing was the $5,025 for reoccurring subscriptions, and that include increasing costs of the many investigative tools that we use during our investigations. And that will conclude my presentation. Council questions?
All right. Thank you, Chief Macias. Tara?
Okay. On page 31, on salaries and benefits, there's no percentage change on the last column to the right. But the percentage change is, adds up to 34%?
Oh, I see that. 34%?
I'll take that. It's, it's not an addition. It's a... It, it's a total from the totals, the 34%?
I'm sorry, what?
So you're looking for the percentage change in salary and benefit?
Yes.
Okay. I will, we will calculate and provide that to you?
Okay. It just looked odd to me. And on the whole, and I could go through it by department, what amount of overtime versus regular time are we using? And I'm basically trying to get at the, at the opinion if we're utilizing, you know, and I know how difficult it is to do hiring, hiring versus use of overtime. Because we don't have a breakdown of regular time and overtime on these budget pages. So I'm not sure if that's a question you can answer for me?
Carolina, is that somewhere I can find that number?
I'm sorry. Could you repeat the question?
I'm wondering what amount of our salary and benefits is overtime versus regular time to be able to make a, have a rationale for overtime versus hiring another officer? And I know that's usually more expensive to hire an additional officer rather than have additional overtime. But when we don't have an overtime breakdown, it's hard to be able to quantify that.
Okay. I can tell you the total amount. It's, so $254,000 is the total for overtime in the patrol?
$254,000 in?
Patrol.
In patrol?
For both years.
Okay.
Each year, I should say.
And we would assume that records and administration would not have those overtime things?
That's, that's correct. The overtime is, is generally in the patrol services.
Okay. And then, again, this is probably a numbers thing. On page 32, the percentage change, again, in the far right column is not there. And then we have a percentage change of 10,021% in the middle, under professional services, 52030.
What page?
Page 32.
Yeah. I, I see.
I just don't know if that's a glitch in the, in the tabulation system.
I apologize. So it looks, appears to be reading an incorrect column. So I will be providing...
It shows a 200% change in that?
Yes.
Item, and it doesn't sound right. The numbers don't look right to me.
Yes.
And it's probably a formatting thing. Again, on, on the patrol, it doesn't have the percentages in the far right column either.
Correct. This is the reason why we're using, we're moving towards software opposed to spreadsheets. So thank you. We apologize.
Okay. Well, those are my only questions for now. Thank you.
All right. Madison?
I think that the ALPR system is like some of our most well-spent money in policing. So I'd love to just get a little annual update on how it's been going, and if you have any latest success stories you feel comfortable sharing of how you guys have been using the technology to deter crime, solve crime, anything?
Gosh, we use that technology on a daily basis. If we get a report of a, of any kind of vehicle burglaries at a certain location, and we have video surveillance that indicates, you know, the type of vehicle that may have been seen on one of the cameras, we, we will run that, that vehicle the time through our ALPR system. And we have a, I guess maybe next time I can give you an update when we present. I mean, ALPRs have the response on stolen vehicles with the ALPR system has gone down tremendously. And that's not just in our city, but I think across, across the county. That once every, all, every city across San Mateo County installed those ALPRs. Either that, or, and also the criminals are getting a little smarter, and they're taking vehicles right before they go into your city to commit a crime so that car isn't reported stolen, so it's not going to get picked up on the ALPR. But the luxury about, I mean, the great thing about it is just having a description of the vehicle, a timeframe. We can really pull information. But yes, I mean, we had, I think we had an attempted vehicle burg, and an officer saw the, a vehicle run a stop sign, goes to proceed to pull it over, and the vehicle, again, of course, was in pursuit. He terminated after exited our city limits. But he was able to get a license plate. They contacted the registered owner of the license plate in the middle of the night in San Francisco. And again, that car had just been stolen in San Francisco. So they were coming in to, to do, you know, to commit some, some criminal activity. Fortunately, the officer was able to, you know, witness the, the violation and attempt a traffic stop, and otherwise that car probably would have burglarized some of our residents.
Wow. Thanks.
All right. Frank, you have any questions for Chief Macias?
I do. I just want to thank you, Chief Macias, and your entire staff for keeping Brisbane as safe as possible. So thank you for that. I do have two questions tonight, one on records. You mentioned earlier regarding the record specialist position, the addition of that position that you are looking to hire because of volume and complexity, and that's causing delays. Will you expect to see any increase in quality and reduction of any mistakes?
I don't see, there are currently no mistakes. I mean, there are being delays. As post-COVID has really started to push our, the, the courts to pick up on cases that have, that were on hold for, for probably a couple of years, and things are finally catching up. So the level of the amount of work that is needed to prepare for those cases in our records division is what slows down all of the other, all of the other work gets slowed down because that's the priority. And when we have a records clerk who just takes time off, goes on vacation, it, it, you know, it's, it will put things on the back burner. And so having this additional person not only to assist in the workload, but also to cross-train so that if one of them is out, the other one can still maintain that level of work and continue things operating in a smooth direction, then it really will make a big difference. So when our records clerk does return, that things don't get behind. So yes, the quality of work will be better. But I can't say that there, the mistakes, there have been no mistakes. Our records clerk is really, really good in what she does. It's, it just will be nice to be able to share the workload and workload. And more than anything, it's just cross-training, having the ability to cross-train someone to take over. As retirees, we have our record supervisor and our admin support getting ready to look at retirement, having the ability for her to share that, that knowledge base with other staff so that when she does retire, it's a seamless transition.
Great. Thank you for that answer. Okay. So we're primarily, you're just going to see an increase in, a timing increase here. That's great. And then, don't you hate when you're doing your reporting, and you put a footnote in, and then you get a question on the footnote? So on page 35, you've got a note on patrol staffing. It says, "In fiscal year 2025, PD was authorized to have four corporal positions..." dot, dot, dot. Where am I seeing the impact of this footnote in this report?
The impact would be in the salary and benefit line?
Okay.
In the increase. So, and it would be?
Forty, 41%?
120. And, yeah.
Got it, got it. Okay. Thank you so much. No, no further questions.
Had the same question. Colleen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. I hope you like this question. We've had quite a few people coming to the council saying, "We want more enforcement, more enforcement." And we've had speed problems, and we've talked about bayshore and visitation. And so there's part of the community says, "Yes, yes, more enforcement." And then we have the other side, the residents who got tickets, and they go, "Wow. City must need the money. Must need the money. Look at them. They're out there just writing tickets like crazy." "I would like for you to dispel the myth that we're raking in big bucks on tickets." "Could you address how we handle the tickets and that we have a lot of costs associated with processing of those tickets?"
Yes. It's not only the processing. We get a very small percentage. Maybe Mario knows what that percentage is of a citation that we get. Maybe $10, maybe $10 of the actual citation. It's the, it's the processing, and then there's a piece, you know, everybody gets a piece of that, of that ticket.
Right.
Of that cost, that ultimate cost.
Thank you.
So it's, it's a very minimal cost that we get.
I think it's really important for all of our residents to hear that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief Macias.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll move on to fire.
Excuse me, Mayor. Did you want your revised figures now?
Oh, yeah, for that, for that item that Frank mentioned. Yeah, that would be great.
Or for, for council?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Let me go back so I can fill in my blanks.
So on page 31?
Yep.
The salary and benefits and the bottom budget change is 3%?
Okay. So 3% at salary and benefits, and, or 3% at the very bottom?
Correct. Because there were no changes for services and supplies.
Okay.
Next page for, uh, police records, page thirty-two.
Mm-hmm.
We have salary and benefits change of four percent. Professional services, which instead of over a thousand percent is six percent?
Ten thousand, it was ten thousand percent.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thousand twenty-one.
Six percent.
Okay.
Um.
And then that total is?
Five percent.
Five percent. Okay, that makes a lot more sense.
And then moving on to patrol.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's rounded to four percent for the salary and benefits and budget.
And then the bottom line would be four percent?
That is correct.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
All right, now we can move on to fire. Chief?
Uh, good evening, Honorable, Honorable Council, Joel Abelson, Deputy Fire Chief from North County Fire Authority. I mean, next slide, please. Um, just want to go over a few things. Our mission statement, uh, be kind, always prepared, and care for others. Uh, overall budget is about five million one hundred ninety-six thousand. Uh, we have sixteen full-time positions allocated. Currently, we have fourteen filled. Um, and currently we have two on significant workers' cop injuries and one on maternity leave. You know, we're in the process of hiring right now and hoping to bring on the two ex, the two missing. Um, hopefully maybe late summer. It takes a while. We're having interviews in a couple of weeks, but that's our current status and, uh.
Can you bring your mic up just a little?
Yeah, I'll talk a little louder too.
Thank you.
Let me know if it gets low again and I will adjust. So, um, anyway, our areas we cover is fire response, medical response, fire code compliance, administration, personnel training, publication, education, and community outreach. Next slide. Some of the highlights related to wildfire preparation this year. We achieved, achieved an overall customer satisfaction rating of ninety-eight percent. We provided pre-hospital advanced life support, also known as ALS, for residents, businesses, and visitors. Over fifty percent of the emergency medical services were provided to senior citizens. Uh, we completed the medical evaluation and screening of personnel to ensure the health of our people. We did annual vegetation inspection and reduction management program, including fire break maintenance. We did our annual community wildfire awareness event, and we did emergency planning, preparedness, information, and community outreach, zoning even, SMC alert, X, et cetera. Next slide. Okay, I'm sorry. Here. But I will point out in our variances, um, there's a lot of movement there. A lot of it was actually just to kind of clean up the language. Making it a lot more clear for you guys, most of it more clear for our staff as to what we're budgeting. Um, so you'll see a lot, there's, there's a lot of numbers in there, but they're usually offset by another number, so just combining or moving them into what made, was more logical for us into those things. I will highlight the changes, the true changes in there. Um, one was the five percent for our JPA supervisor. That's the contractual rates, the Pacific employee that we're all required to pay for, the portion of his salary. And the other was a slight increase to, um, our, well, excuse me, our abatement program, our weed abatement program in case we had to do a little bit more enforcement activities around that subject matter. So those are the two changes. I also will point out one that was, could be confusing. You'll see is there was a big drop of over a hundred seventy thousand dollars listed in there. What that is, is actually was previous purchases for turnouts and radios that were already made and we no longer have moving forward. So you'll see that where, why that, there's that number there. Um, next I will try to kind of preempt the, uh, overtime question. To give you a little context, um, I mean, I don't have the current year's budget, but I have this year's budget. It hasn't changed much other than slight increases for raises and so forth. But to give you some context, um, this year's the budget for salaries and benefits, our full-time salaries was three point seven, and the overtime was about three hundred fifty-five thousand. So, that's, so that kind of gives you a rough balance? I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, we're gonna get cozy over here. I think it's, I think, yeah, I can get there. I'm sorry.
They need longer mics.
Repeat any of that?
No, no.
I can hear, I heard that.
That was fine.
Okay, uh, let me grab my, and I want to go a little further into overtime. So our actual overtime this year, um, was a lot higher than the, what the budgeted number was. But it's actually a little misleading because most of that overtime, substantial amount of overtime, in tune of almost five hundred thousand was for reimbursable overtime through those state OES program. So that includes both when we go out to help other jurisdictions and also when we apply for funding for pre-position, we call pre-positioning, which is when we up-staff for different events. We often apply for funding for that. And so we actually get reimbursed at, you know, there's a rate that we get reimbursed, which includes roll-up costs and things like that. So what you actually see coming in actually often exceeds on, as far as a dollar figure, the money we actually expended, um, for that overtime. And, and so you'll, that's why you see a big variance. Then if you include, so most of our overtime has to do with backfilling for minimum staffing. We don't have a lot of, you know, we don't do a lot of overtime for, you know, miscellaneous stuff. Occasionally we'll do a training or some type of public event, but that's really a small portion of overtime. It's usually to cover our minimum staffing. Unfortunately, you know, we've, we have to maintain three people on that engine every day. And, uh, you know, especially, and often we'll have the, you know, different events that come up where it's not reimbursed by the state, i.e. high fire danger, some type of storm event coming through. You know, we always try to get the funding, but it's not always there. But that would be an example of where we would go slightly above our minimum staffing because of the need. But yeah, so it's all based on emergency response, um, for that part. So hopefully that gives you some insight as to our overtime and our staffing levels.
Yeah, that's really helpful.
It does, and thank you for being preemptive.
Yeah, no problem. I'll take any other questions.
All right, so, uh, questions, uh, Colleen?
Just one, one question under page number thirty-seven. Number five-two-oh-four-five, special department expense from twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-five, twenty-six changed dramatically. And I had a hard time putting my hands on what actually affected those figures. Can you give us some idea?
Actually, I'll answer that question.
Okay.
Um, in special department for fiscal year twenty-four, overtime was included in that because of the software we were using at the time, we couldn't put it anywhere else. So we plugged it into special department, three hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, that makes, that makes a great deal of sense. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, um, years ago, we approved the purchase of a new fire engine that was going to take.
Forever.
I don't know, forever to build. I almost used a euphemism that I shouldn't. What's the status with that? And does that show up on our vehicle replacement? Or is that in this budget?
I'll answer that as well. Oh, um, it's still on order. So we paid fifty percent down from the vehicle replacement fund. It's not included in here because it will be coming out of the replacement fund. My understanding is probably in the coming year.
Yeah, so I have a little, with three agencies, I hard, it's hard to keep track exactly whose fire engines are coming. I know there's, there are some coming.
We ordered them with.
Yeah.
South City or Daly City, I forget which.
Uh, yeah, it's either Daly City or Pacific, it was Daly City, actually, in this case.
And it was like, we're gonna give you this price, but just now when we deliver it to you.
It's gonna be way more.
Be way more.
So if it's, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that we, we entered into a lease. It's, they call it a lease, but it's not a lease like you would do in the traditional sense, meaning it's called a lease, but it really is just a payment plan. And my understanding is that we locked in those rates. Yeah, we locked in those rates, so there shouldn't be a substantial increase. I think maybe it was to avoid the increase.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's true. There was something about prepaying and having a.
Yeah, we get a substantial, we just did this recently for some, for the other agencies that, and so, yeah, there's a substantial payment, or by the manufacturer itself, they actually give you a big discount by playing up, paying upfront through the leasing agency. Again, leasing agency doesn't sound right. In terms, it took me a while to kind of grasp what that meant. I go, it's not a lease, it's a, it's a loan, basically, so.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Madison?
No, I don't have any questions.
All right, Frank?
Uh, no questions here. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to public works, utilities, Marina, and the library, all under item nine.
Yes, sir. Uh, here we go, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Portem, council members, good evening. I know as you've looked through my budget, you can see we've got fifteen divisions, so I only have thirty-five or forty slides to go through with you. I, I'm sorry, I should have raised my hand. That was engineering humor. I really only have eight to go through.
It was like, what?
I'll, I'll try to keep it a little condensed for you. So next slide, there we go, stay right there, please, on the slide. So just a couple of thoughts I want to go through as you're reading this, because I know you can all read it faster than I can speak to it. From FY twenty-five to FY twenty-six, we're looking for a seven percent increase in our budget. So, and it's not insubstantial when you have a fourteen million dollar budget. That's nine hundred thousand dollars. But as we go through some of the details later on, what you're gonna find is that nearly three hundred thousand dollars of that increase is what I refer to as self-imposed increases. And that's because the city has implemented things like a dark sky ordinance that applies to us. We've implemented an invasive species regulation that applies to us. We've decided that we wanted to have a tree inventory maintenance and management system applies to us. So all of those costs come in, and in, and in that sense, they're somewhat, you could delay some of them, but they are things that, that you've told us that we have to do. And so that's why they're, they're here in our budget. Uh, next slide, please. Some other really interesting observations in my mind as you look at this budget, really, two-thirds of this budget is enterprise fund. And, and the way you want to look at that is if you see in the lower right-hand corner, you see water service, and you circle all the way around till you come up to wastewater service. All of that, all of those things are enterprise funds. And the challenge you have with those is that just within that small piece there, you have nearly four million dollars. So twenty-six percent of our total costs where we are captive to the rates of others. And those rates are the cost for us to purchase water from SFPUC and the cost for us to have wastewater treated SFPUC. So I, I share all this with you because we do have changes as we go through. And there are some amounts that we've asked for that are not completely significant. But from an overall perspective, we really don't have a ton of flex in our budget. Next slide, please. So as I go through the individual budgets and tell you what my increases are for this year, and again, I, I'm not going to be giving highlights and such for the past year because recognizing the number of budgets I have, I thought I would just hit the highlights. But the highlights in general are going to be those things that are a cost increase of five thousand dollars or more. And I, I've not tried to talk to you about utilities increases. Utilities increases are what they are. If electricity is costing us more, it's costing us more. If water, wastewater costing us more, they're more. And in some cases, we do have reallocated vehicle costs. Because what we do is with the accounting systems that we have available to us, we try to keep a good track of where costs are going and where they are assigned. So year to year, we do realign those to make sure that we're not charging one division or the other different. The reason we try to be so strict on that is because we do have those enterprise funds. And if you're familiar with enterprise fund law, the revenue that comes into an enterprise fund has to be spent on an enterprise fund. So that's why we make sure, particularly when two-thirds of our budget are the enterprise funds, we try to make sure that the general fund isn't assigning cost to the enterprise funds. It shouldn't be there. So we want to make sure that, that we come out of things, uh, in a good light. So here, we'll, we'll go through some of the items here. You can read these. Uh, again, you see the big one, the second one there, that's a city tree management. That's if we were to do this in a three-year plan, it's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. I, I recognize the amount on that. The second one is the dark skies ordinance implementation. You'll see that we've got both the implementation and the outdoor lighting assessment in there. The lighting assessment that's up at the front isn't really new. It's rolled over. We didn't get it accomplished last year. I think you're well aware that I've got an employee that would normally be managing this program. It's off on an extended personal leave. So we still think we can get it done this year. Uh, and, but then we think we also need the cost of it. And we, we thought we had told you this as we were going through and doing the dark sky ordinance. There are going to be some significant costs on both our buildings and our streetlights to get in compliance with our own ordinances. Uh, this is where they're coming home, uh, to root. The, the next one after dark sky ordinance, ISR, the invasive species regular, regu- invasive species removal implementation, I'm sorry, it's going to be an ongoing effort. Uh, the next one, SB thirteen eighty-three, that's the state bill that was passed a handful of years ago. Its purpose is really to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and it's really focused on methane. And the, the purchase of mulch is required because the mulch is used as we are trying to prevent bringing organics into landfills. But then you have to do something with that mulch. So the state requires us to buy so much mulch and to use it in place in certain areas. So these are just things that go on. Uh, in admin, a couple of things that are new, and these are both related to the GIS department. One is a purchase of the new aerial imagery subscription. And we found this is really important. This has been really very important with our NITD's new commercial fee that we put in because what we've previously been using for mapping has been the digital maps that the county flew. And we're finding that they weren't quite as accurate as we'd like to be. And I think out of our due diligence and out of our desire to make sure that we're charging cost appropriately to our commercial businesses compared to what we pay for ourself, we're using a higher resolution imagery. And that's why, that's why we're, we're doing that, uh, subscription. The next one is the global navigation satellite system. This is one of those things that I'm going to say is imposed by regulations. There are new laws pending where when we put utilities in the ground now, days gone past, you had to mark the outside edge of your pipeline within a foot. The new laws are going to require us to do it within four inches. Yes, I, I had the same reaction, Mayor. Thank you. And you just can't do that with the equipment that we have available now. So this is why we need to spend fifteen thousand dollars, uh, and buy that. Uh, going into streets and storm drains, I, the San Bruno Concrete bulb out. This is, you, you'll recall it, San Bruno, San Mateo, what I call five points. There were some delineators that were put in. Uh, the city manager has asked us to look at putting that in in concrete, so and removing the delineators, so that item is there. Sidewalk repairs is just an increase. We just, and also with the annual, well, the annual yard waste cleanup has moved over. But we're just finding we don't have enough money in the budget. You're seeing that we've got a lot more areas of sidewalk that are lifted where you're seeing we've got them marked with pink spray paint. You know, pink spray paint matches the intent of the law, and it's what JPIA tells us we need to do. I, I just think we probably ought to fix some of them. So that's why we're asking for money. If I could go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So at Mission Blue Center, we've got some more of the stucco and such that's falling off of some of the pylasters. That, this doesn't begin to touch what the, uh, what the council's subcommittee on facilities has looked at. I think that's a much bigger and longer conversation. These are just really emergency repairs, painting the trailers, pretty straightforward. The rain, the rain hall guard, the city hall rain guard, it's been here since two thousand and eight. It's just starting to get a little tired and it, it needs to be brought back up to speed. The big one in parks maintenance is both of the tennis courts desperately need resurfacing. Um, and so again, I think this is a council decision. This is, you know, certainly you would have people that, uh, are going to say we need to do it. And we just don't feel they're up to snuff right now. So that's why we're asking for. And then the last one is just the cost that our maintenance people are experiencing. They're, they're getting killed with gasoline increases, that are getting killed with, uh, equipment supply issues and the chain that it takes to get those things. So we've had them on the same contract for well over a decade, and they're just saying that they need more money, which I understand. Next slide, please. So the photovoltaic streetlight in Lagoon Way, again, not new, we just rolled it over. So it kind of looks like it makes the budget new, but it's just one more of those things that because of supply chain issues, we haven't got in. This is at Sierra Point Parkway and Lagoon Way. We've been wanting to put a photovoltaic streetlight, very much like the photovoltaic streetlights that we have out at the Marina and at the shared use parking lot. Whereas those light poles get knocked over from rust decay and heavy winds, we replace them. And we're pretty happy with them. The lights have been working just fine. So we'd like to start implementing some more of them out there. It's particularly useful in an area such as where this one is proposed because that way we don't have to run electricity to it. It saves us a ton for doing that. I, I want to spend a lot of time in water because the cross-connection control program, the site hazard assessment program, and the request to backfill the engineering technician are incredibly important to me. So, so apologies for spending a lot of time on this. But I really don't think your utilities division is in a place right now where we can do all of the regulatory reporting that we're required to do. And, and that's incredibly important for two reasons. Cause number one, and it's the minor reason, when you don't do the reporting on time and in the fashion they require, you're subject to notice as a violation. But much more importantly is that those regulations are in place for the public health and for their safety. And so that's why we want to do it. So I, I do sort of need to, to take you on a little journey down memory lane of what's gone on in public works. And a, a couple of things. Number one, all of the functions that we've taken on and how we got to where we don't have this position. And also a recognition of the fact that even though there's fifteen divisions, we really are mutually supporting. And we've only, we've got less than thirty people. So it's not like we have two people in each division. We, we tend to do what we do and we, we cross-assign resources. And if one of the divisions, whichever it is, is struggling, needs to respond to an emergency, we all come to that. So I'll sort of weave that together for you. Many years ago, under a very different Parks and Rec regime than my esteemed colleague to the left, there were maintenance workers in Parks and Rec, and they weren't being managed terribly well. They weren't being successful there. So those came into public works. Years later, the Director of Aquatic, uh, Resources and Services retired, so the Marina came into public works. Sometime before that, the then assistant to the city manager retired, so Open Space and Ecology Committee came to public works. And then that became, and there was also a sustainability manager added to that. And I think you, you all.
So popular.
Yeah, we're, it's good to be us. It's, it's, it's okay to be popular. And so I think you're all aware of the amazing work that, that Karen and Adrian have been doing with sustainability. We're incredibly proud of what they've done. Then years after that, the employee that was responsible for our solid waste franchise is retired, so it came to public works. And then when the city decided to implement its IT technology master plan and create a GIS manager position, well, the person who was the engineering technician applied for and got it. person who was the engineering technician applied for it and got it. And we never backfilled that position. And now, a handful of years later, we've got so many new requirements from our earnest regulators at the state and the federal government that we're quite certain that we've got a full time employees, we've got two thousand hours worth of labor that we just can't do. Okay? And how that gets even more exacerbated is the way that we've been mutually supporting over these years with some senior long term employees is going away. It's public knowledge that Karen Kinzer, Deputy Director of all of the non-enterprise funds, has announced her retirement as August twenty second. So that is a thirty year employee that is going away. When you look at me, I was hired here twenty four years ago because we needed water and wastewater experience. I was working for a national firm that did that. Seven years prior to that, I had been in a wholesale water agency. So I can provide some oversight to the excellent work that Jerry Flanagan and his team do. But I've told management that I'm done September twenty fourth. So this may very well be the last time you see me in this room. So having understood all of the things that we've taken on, and we really have not had additional people added, and had one loss, and this overhead of knowledge that you're losing, I really can't express, or maybe I am trying to express, how badly we desperately need this position. So Mayor, I was wondering if you would just entertain me and allow us to stop now and see if any of your colleagues have questions on this, because I really don't want to leave this unanswered.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So Madison, it seems like you're ready.
I'd just love to know a little bit more about like exactly what that position would focus on.
Sure. So the primary thing is going to be this cross connection control program. And one of the things that we are going to be required to do is we have to visit every site in this city where we have a water service, and we have to examine its potential for backflow. So in other words, the cross connection or the backflow of bad materials into our potable water, we have to do an assessment on that. And then we have to follow up and make sure they implement that backflow. And that's, as we were looking at the new regulations, I think that's about sixteen hundred hours of the work.
Do you anticipate that this is something that you're going to fill with like, with a, like there are candidates, existing employees that would be candidates, or is something that you anticipate would be going, we'd be going outside of our
Well, we already have a job description for it, ma'am. And so we are going to make it open, obviously. I don't, it's not going to be just an internal recruitment. I think there are some pieces to this that are unique enough that we're going to be looking for skill sets. But certainly, we would love to see some of our employees. Across the board, I think we have very, very much given people vertical mobility here. And we're certainly looking to, that's our water quality technician, is a former maintenance worker. The person that was the engineering technician was a former maintenance worker, our current GIS manager, same person, was a maintenance worker. So I'd love it if somebody can do that. And if somebody can certainly rise to that position, even if there are pieces in their CV that they would need to fill over a certain time period, we're certainly open to that.
Okay, thank you.
As it pertains to this, I don't have any questions about what you're discussing right now, but stuff that was previous discussed, yes.
If you don't mind, ma'am, I'll finish, and then we can come back to those. I just wanted to, I just wanted to hit this while it was fresh on you.
Okay. All right. Why don't you keep going?
Okay, happy to. Thank you so much for entertaining that. And then as you come down, you look at GVMID, you see some of the same things here. We also, because we provide water in both districts, the city of Brisbane's districts and the GVMID, when we have a program like that, we assign the cost to both districts. The last one, the Zone Three Automatic Flushing Unit, what this will do is if you drive up Guadalupe Canyon Parkway, and before you get to Carter, you look at the left where that emergency vehicle access is, and there's a fire hydrant out there. And it feels like about a fifty fifty that there's a hose attached to that fire hydrant, right? And so what we are doing is we are manually flushing from there. Because the problem we have, many years ago, the city's water used to be disinfected by chlorine only. Chlorine unfortunately has a number of known disinfectant byproducts. So our wholesale supplier, City and County of San Francisco, changed their disinfectant to chloramine. Chloramine produces much less disinfectants. Unfortunately, its residual time is much less. So under certain weather conditions, it gets to a point where we no longer have an adequate amount of disinfectant in it to serve it to our customers as potable water that is not preventing the substrate and the growth of microorganisms in there. So we end up flushing water, filling with new water, putting more chlorine into, yes, it's a real party. And we already have a flushing unit over down at the end of Harold and Anis. That's where we have one. And this is another one. And what we're just trying to do here is, it's not an insignificant amount of time. But what we're trying to do is save human resource time, because otherwise, we've got to send a body up there with a truck, and they've got to stand there while that's ongoing. So that's the point of that. Next slide, please. Thank you. So again, over in GVMID, which is the Guadalupe Valley Municipal Improvement District, I'm assuming you all know that, this is the Valley Drive Lift Station. And what we have there is we have four pumps that are responsible for discharging all of the waste from the city of Brisbane over to San Francisco and getting it to their Southeast Water Quality Control Plant. Unfortunately, the flow totalizer is failing. So we have a human machine interface where we can go in there, and we can see what the totals are, and that's how we report things to San Francisco. We are losing that. And we need that, because we need to reopen the port accurately. And at the same time, there is a discharge assembly on the downstream side of the pipes. And what this is, it's a manifold with a twelve inch pipe and an eight inch pipe and a series of valves that we manipulate, because we have to take, sometimes we take a pump out of service or a valve out of service. We try and set things up so they run on a precise sequence, depending upon how much flow is coming into the station. This is starting to get into the geeky stuff that engineers love, you know, because we all get up in the morning, and we brush our teeth, and we make our coffee, and we flush our toilets and take showers. So a couple hours later, we get this huge flow down at Valley Drive, and then we have to turn on their big pumps. But then as the flow starts to dissipate, we kind of have to bring on a small pump and take a, and to turn the big pumps off and give it a rest. And we have to cycle them in a certain sequence. Well, if the manifold downstream of that isn't working, we can't do any of that. So that destroys our pumps. And so we're very much trying not to do that. The Golden Aster Pump Station, that is a backup generator that, I think, as you well know, it's up in the Northeast Ridge, it's the highest pump station that we have, a backup generator to it. We just need to replace it. It's at the point where it can't be repaired. So there we go. In the sewer system, we're starting to do smoke test field surveys. This is an investigation we haven't, I feel like the city did this before I came here. So it maybe goes back thirty years. And the problem that we are having is what we are starting to see is more than the expected increase of flow in our sewer system when there are rain events. Typically, cities and engineers will design for an increase factor of three to five. We're starting to peak out beyond the five mile. So that gives us a couple of problems. Number one is now you're sending all of that flow to San Francisco, and you're paying to treat it. Right? And the other thing that tells you your system's leaking. So what a smoke test field survey does is you force smoke into the system, into the sewage system, you go back, and you track and see where it's coming out, and then you do those repairs. So we're just trying to get that started. Nothing else terribly interesting there. Sewer, you'll see sewers on there again. If you're looking at this and you're halfway interested, the split that we generally do between GVMID and the main sewer system, which is the main part of Brisbane, it's normally like thirty seventy. So GVMID is about thirty percent of the flow, thirty percent of the sewage that we receive from customers. The rest of Central Brisbane is seventy percent. So that's how those numbers break out. Next and final slide. I thought I'd give you a happy that there's no change in EOC there, just so I'm not asking for anything there in library maintenance. And just because I've got it sandwiched in between some really, really big changes that we have out at the marina, we are starting to have experiences out there again. We've got a couple of spots in the marina that are getting pretty shallow on a low, low tide, boats are stuck in their slips. When you're departing the marina, the starboard side has got some shoaling. So it's unfortunately time to go back through and do the dredging and pre-design. If you've been down there lately, and you've looked at the harbor master's office, and you've looked at those two restrooms, they're getting pretty rusted. They need work. Everything rusts at sea level, including stainless steel. It's just maintenance we have to do. So we really are urging you to do that as well. And will that, of course, result in increased rates for our customers? Yes, we have to. It's been a long time since we've adjusted rates at the marina. And I know our customers down there are not happy. But we are at the point now where we're below the median birth slip rate in the Bay Area. And even though we're the seventh largest marina, we probably need to get it caught up. We need to get it back. And I think you want to do the dredging now. I think this is something that will last you, you know, at least ten years. I know the council has been privy to a lot of other discussions we've had with sea level rise, and what's happening out there, and how long is the marina viable. This, if done, will not put you in a position where you have a marina that's negatively impacted and not usable by sea level rise. So what we're proposing here will get you to the point, you're still using the marina, you're still recovering these, these costs. So with that, I'm done. Thank you so much for bearing with me. Happy to answer questions.
That was excellent, Randy. Thank you. So why don't we, bless you. Frank, you want to start us off?
Questions for Randy? Not a problem. Thank you, Randy. That was very comprehensive. So I just have some questions here.
Sure.
Not a lot. So the first one I'm looking at, and of course, you know, as a council member, I'm looking at our nine hundred thousand dollar deficit, right? And just looking to see if there's any place we can make some cuts. So you mentioned early on that city council told you to comply with the dark sky ordinance. It's my understanding that commercial property we have until 2029 to make those changes. Is there a reason that we've got fifty thousand dollars budgeted for this exact year?
We think it's going to take ten years to get through it, sir.
Ten years? Okay, dovetailing on that. Dovetailing is the word of the night. So I don't see any money for the dark sky ordinance in fiscal year 2027.
That's a mistake, sir, then. I'm sorry about that.
So that should be fifty grand as well?
Yeah. What page, could you tell me which page you're looking at, sir?
Oh, yeah. I don't want to keep you guessing here. It's page one oh five of my packet, labeled fifty three of the budget packet, item J, and it is the third item, fourth item, sorry.
My package didn't go that far. I'm sorry.
I think that's the same variance from 2026 to 2027.
Correct. That's correct.
So I think the finance director is telling me it is in there.
It's there.
It's there.
Doesn't change from
Right. So what we're saying is it just because it doesn't change.
Oh, it's flat.
But it's there. Yes, sir.
Got it, got it. And then the same for the implement invasive species?
Correct. Yes, sir. That's a three year program.
Okay, under purpose, it just says fifteen years. Is that your projection on how long this is going to take?
Total, yes.
Got it.
There we go. Thanks.
Moving over to the repairs to the tennis courts.
Mm hmm.
Can we spread those? Can we do one this year, one next year? Is that a possibility?
I think it's a possibility, sir, but I would defer to the Parks and Recor, Director's position on that. And she's, I see her nodding her head in the background, that yes, it could be done.
Is one worse than the other?
In my opinion, I would say that the Lippman Courts are worse than
I don't think you're on.
I'll speak for her. She's, we're doing a ventriloquist act here. Noreen is saying that the Lippman Courts are worse.
Okay, very good. Okay. Randy, I just wanted to call, thank you for calling out the sidewalk repairs. You know, I walk all over town, it makes you laugh every time I say it. I see all the pink paint, and it's great that we can get that done.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to the Golden Aster Pump Station.
Mm hmm.
So we're done. We can't push this at all. Like, the generator does not work. Period the end.
We are at a point where if we had a public safety power shut off, we might not be able to provide upper water elevation, sir.
Wow. Okay. Thank you for that. And then last but not least, this is probably my ignorance on how this works. I'm on page fifty five of my packet. It's number, or page one oh seven J. It's the second item. It says utilities water purchases. We've got a credit of ninety two thousand. What's, I don't understand the, I don't understand this line item at all. I'm sorry.
It's a variance, because what we are finding is that while we've had a springback, a comeback, a rise in Central Brisbane, we haven't yet seen the full recovery from COVID and GVMID. So they're actually purchasing less water.
Okay. Again, thank you so much for the comprehensive presentation. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Frank. Cully?
Randy, you always have the most interesting presentations.
Thank you, ma'am. That's very kind.
It's really fascinating. It's almost hard to digest at all. Some random thoughts here. When you talked about, and we get into labor costs and looking at water quality, and I have different things come to mind. Sometime back, under capital improvements, you were looking at replacing the meters. If we're going to be examining backflow devices, are you, just give us a preview. Are you thinking of, is it anywhere in the realm of possibilities to be also doing those meters in the next couple of years?
So the challenge we have with meters is that the AMI, the advanced metering information technology, is that that is a capital improvement project, and that is something that the city would be on the hook for. And I know the council is well aware that our bond capacity has been down. We've, our rating has been downgraded. So we probably don't have the ability to get the bonding to do that right now. We've put in a couple of grant applications for it. They haven't been terribly successful. I haven't fully sorted out the details at this point in time. But generally, the cost burden for putting in new backflow devices, because they are a device downstream of our meter, is on the property being served.
So we're just inspecting to see
That's correct.
If it exists. And at what point would those have been installed?
Well, I think it's going to be, at what point will they be installed? The ones that are installed right now are inspected annually. They're required to be inspected annually, that we work with Seminole County Department of Health to work on that, and we turn in reports on that every year, including on our own.
I guess what I'm asking is, let's say there's older construction, would they have been installed? Or is this, say, nineteen seventies onward, where the code said you must have XYZ, the same way there's, there's gas pressure valves, and a lot of those things have come about over, over time. So are we anticipating there could be a lot of those?
I think there will be a lot, yes.
Okay.
There will be a lot. And I think part of the reason this regulation has come about is that the enforcement of backflow and back pressure prevention has been enforced irregularly across the state. I'll tell you that here, that's one of the first things we do if, because I do plan check too in my spare time as a city engineer. So when I'm doing plan check, if a building comes in, and it has a backflow device on it, and they're touching any part of the fire suppression system, the first thing I do is say, well, you have to send me a picture of the current backflow device. I need the serial number, the size, its date, last time it was certified. And if they don't have one, they're required to put one on. That is challenging in some cases. It's not unusual for, if you've got one of the commercial buildings like we have around us here that's got a six inch device on it, it's twenty five thousand dollars to put a double check detector assembly on it. So that's tough. If somebody was just like, I'm just putting in four sprinkler heads. So I guess, but you're touching your sprinkler assembly, and we do that. And I imagine that in other jurisdictions, people are not catching that, either consciously or unconsciously. I don't know if it was intentional or not.
And in terms of actually checking all of these residences, how many years did you say this would take?
This is going to be ongoing. It's an ongoing requirement.
Okay, so this could be
Yeah. So how long is it going to take us to get to, we have north of sixteen hundred meters, maybe eighteen hundred. It's going to take a long time to get out to each and every, to get out to each and everyone and do this. Now, bear in mind that we read each of those meters every other month. So we already have a crew that goes out to them. But right now, they're just going out with a device and doing an automatic reading.
Right.
So that's part of the AMI program is to get away from that, where the device automatically reports in some fashion or another over the air back to us. So we'd like to do that. But now we have a different requirement to go out to them on a regular basis.
That's why I brought up the smart meters, because I recall you saying in the past something like, you've got four people going out to, through the entire month, just reading meters. And that's a significant labor cost. And if there was one way we could reduce costs, we would be wise to try to reduce that. That's a significant cost, but it's offset by what would the meters cost?
Right, by the million dollars. Yes, ma'am. Exactly. Right. That's what we struggle with.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. That's overwhelming in itself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Madison?
You might have explained this, and I just missed it, but page forty four, Parks Maintenance, Special Department expense, a hundred and twenty four thousand in twenty five, twenty six. Big, big jump up, and then like nothing the next year. So I was just curious what that was.
So that is where the repairs of the tennis courts are embedded, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
No, it was, it was hidden. We don't
That's it for me.
I'm going to go back to the tennis courts.
Mm hmm.
Why are the prices Why are the prices so different for resurfacing the tennis courts?
The level of uh decay of them. And one is a single court.
One is a single court, the other is a double.
Lippman's a double.
Yep.
Okay. So Lippman's the larger of the court?
Yes.
And it needs more grinding down and removal of substance before it gets redone?
Yeah, and both of these numbers were based on quotes from contractors.
Okay. And I will save the other question for when we get into park and rack as far as the tennis courts go. Um, it's the only questions I have at the moment.
Thank you.
All right, uh. You know, Randy, I I just want to thank you for your years of service. And saying that, you know, this might be the last time we see you.
Oh.
That just seems like that hits my heart really hard, uh, because, I mean, you've been such a gem for the city, and I know how much you care about us and the entire community.
Yeah.
You wear so many different hats. It's going to be impossible to replace you. And
Agree.
You know, tonight, you 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 came with a sense of urgency and um and care in the things that you are requesting. I mean, obviously, the the council has to make the final decisions, but um, you know, I I appreciate your passion that you brought into it as well as just the the knowledge and experience that that backs the request. And so I I just want to say I really appreciate everything that you've done for us, and I've enjoyed our relationship um through the years and um just thank you for.
You're very generous. Thank you. And and it's been reciprocal. I've I've really enjoyed my time here. And as I've told the city manager, I'm not going anywhere. Uh, my wife and my children live here in this town. Uh, in fact, one of them still lives me while he and his girlfriend are trying to sort out how to get money to buy a house, and the other one comes by once a week to use the gym. And so I've told him, if you need me, call me. And I think I've told that to the other department heads and people I work with. I I think the rule of thumb I've used is if it's a quick question, call me. If I'm not fishing in Mexico, I'll pick up the phone. Uh, if it's a long question, you may owe me two beers at the end of a workday, and that's perfectly fine.
We didn't need to find another reason to have a meeting that you have to attend. I didn't have enough notice.
Thank you so much, Randy.
Thank you.
Randy.
Okay, uh, moving on to Parks and Rec. Can could I have a request to take a break before?
Yes, please.
Absolutely. Thank you for asking that. Because we've. We can take a break. That's all you need.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, these are yours.
So we will take a five-minute break.
Roll them up in mine. Oh, shit, what are we? Everybody needs a mental health break. They need aspirin.
I got a cookie. I know.
You can grab the mics are still on.
Back everybody and we will keep moving forward with our budget. Up next is Park and Rec and Noreen, you have the spotlight.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Randy is a tough act to follow, but I'll do my best as I walk you through the budget for Parks and Recreation, as well as cosponsorships, and happy to answer any questions you may have at the end. Next slide, please. The department's mission statement is provided here alongside some high-level information pertaining to our budget. Our team includes seven full-time staff and more than seventy part-time employees, some of who joined us earlier this evening. Our core service programs, including youth and aquatics, encompass the most significant outlay of our greatest resource, which is our employees. Next slide. I'm excited to share with you some highlights from the past year. With the council's support, we drafted and adopted an age-friendly action plan after being certified as an age-friendly city by AARP and the World Health Organization. We also adopted the city's first-ever public art master plan, which will provide long-term guidance and direction to the city in order to maintain a dynamic public art program. The environmental study for Crocker Trail is also in motion. Over the past year, we have experienced consistent growth in all of our programs, including senior meals, the Youth Advisory Committee, sports, and childcare programs. We've engaged new residents through our efforts to expand intergenerational programming and have highlighted the importance of mental health. We want to thank the council for your ongoing support of these vital programs and services for the community. Next slide. This slide highlights the adjustments proposed within the Park and Rec budget. As you'll note, there are only a few new requests, with the majority of changes proposed being adjustments to existing line items in order to accommodate the needs of the community and to continue to operate programs and facilities as they are today. Many of these adjustments are a direct result of increased participation in programs, including camp, field trips, youth sports, seniors, and special events. As stated in years past, our pool has aging infrastructure, and the gas heater has carried us well beyond its projected useful life. Ongoing repairs to the heater and pump system have been necessary in recent years in order to keep the pool operable. The electrification project is underway, and we anticipate a reduction in maintenance expenses once the full conversion comes to fruition. Next slide, please. The final item is cosponsorship budget, which supports local nonprofit groups with their operations, fundraising efforts, and special events. Next slide. Next slide, please. Park and Rec's department staff work alongside local nonprofit organizations and community partners to cosponsor more than thirty events annually. Examples include the Artist's Evening of Sharing, Brisbane Dance Workshop, Brisbane Village Helping Hands, San Bruno Mountain Watch, the Chamber of Commerce, Silver Spot, Sierra Point Yacht Club, the Brisbane School District, Lyrical Opposition, the Lions Club, and more. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Noreen. Frank, why don't we start with you?
Hi, Noreen.
Hi, Frank.
Um, just one question. Uh, it's on page seventy-three of the Budget Report, one-twenty-five of my packet. Um, it says maintenance structural, structural, uh, solar thermal system project. This is at the pool, and we've got a credit of eighty-five hundred. Just curious about the credit.
Yeah, so that's because the solar sys- the solar system at the pool is not operable. So we're not absorbing the cost of that system at this time.
Oh, you're just not maintaining it because it's broken. Got it, got it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. My- that was my only question. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Frank. Addison?
Yeah, I just had a, just wanted to call out, probably a typo, page sixty-three. The communications line item, seventy part-time. Looks like a copy paste.
Uh, unfortunately, yes, those permeated throughout several of the pages. Um, if you're looking, I'm sorry, was it sixty-three? Yeah, so most of them are zero. Um, and it should be zero.
Yeah. I think what you're seeing is the seventy part-time, and that's fourteen point something full-time equivalent.
That it's being repeated throughout several of the the pages. So we could call out
Oh, yeah, I see it here.
Yeah, so we'll call out what the actual amount is when there is one. We can do that.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I'm seeing it all over the place.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Terry?
So are you going to go through the separate sections? Or is this a question, are you asking for input on the first portion of your, or was that your entire?
That was my presentation.
Okay. So do you know what kind of overtime your overall arching, since we're not going to go through separate areas? What kind of overtime versus, um, non-overtime that you have?
I will defer to Carolina on that.
Do you want, we have it separated by department?
Okay.
Is that fair?
If you want to do it by department, I'll do it by department.
Um, so for seven zero zero one, or admin, it's two thousand twenty-nine?
I'm sorry.
Two thousand twenty-nine.
Dollars?
Correct.
Of overtime?
Yes.
Okay.
That's admin. The next one that has overtime is seven zero zero two, which is Parks and Facilities, and that amount is also two thousand twenty-nine?
I'm, I'm
Uh, Department seven zero zero two, which is Parks and Facilities?
Recreation Facilities.
Correct, sorry.
Okay, is seven thousand and two dollars?
Two thousand twenty-nine dollars, same amount.
Okay.
Moving on to seven zero zero three, which is youth activities. The amount is three thousand forty-four.
Got it.
Seven zero zero five for seniors?
Uh, I don't have a seven zero zero five seniors. Uh, oh, they're right. Okay, my page was turned. Okay?
Two thousand twenty-nine. Two zero twenty-nine. Okay, next, seven zero zero six, which is special events. We have one thousand fifteen.
And did we do seven zero zero four, adult?
We do not have overtime there.
Okay.
Seven zero zero seven for the teen center, or teens, rather, is five hundred seven dollars. And then finally, uh, last but not least, uh, aquatics, seven zero zero eight is five hundred seven dollars, five oh seven.
So really not utilizing overtime to, in very much. And can you tell me what the age group, what's teens and what's youths?
Sure, so we consider youth zero to twelve, and teens are thirteen to seventeen.
Zero to twelve is youth, and teens are thirteen to seventeen. And what are seniors?
Um, fifty plus.
Fifty plus? Wow, it's gotten really, really young.
Yeah.
Um.
Nothing wrong with that.
Well, it's just really not indicative of what demographics are on what an old person is, a senior, or where you should be even getting a discount.
Correct.
I mean, okay.
Do you have some explanation as to why that, just the number?
Um, I think it was, I mean, it's kind of an arbitrary number. I think it was primarily to be able to accommodate folks who had a need to participate in activities at the Sunrise Room or be able to drop in and have socialization. Um, so that has just kind of been the threshold criteria that we've utilized so that we can accommodate, uh, the demand and the need, uh, from community.
Yeah, you know, when I'm at the senior luncheon or some of the other events, it seems that most of the people are much older than fifty.
They are. I would say the bulk of participating seniors are between, um, sixty-five and eighty, or even seventy and eighty-five.
But you know, some of the folks that are younger, you could tell that they really benefit from that socialization and are extremely grateful that they have that opportunity. Thank you.
Hey, can I just dovetail on Councilmember O'Connell's question? So I wasn't writing down the numbers as we were receiving them regarding the overtime, but I think I heard it was maybe around fifteen thousand total. It didn't go over that, did it?
No.
Roughly, I'm just looking for a rough number. Didn't go over fifteen grand.
Yeah, it didn't go over fifteen.
Thank you.
Two, four, seven,
Ten, yeah.
Ten, eleven, eleven thousand.
Great, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, it's all good. Terry, continue.
So the money that you're asking for in this budget, this is after you get reimbursed for fees? And how does that work on the, the five million dollar? Oh, I've lost my pie chart here. Um, Park and Rec, the thirty-six, three-point-six million dollars spent. What do you really spend before you get reimbursed for fees?
So that's the total cost of expenses, and then they're offset by revenue for, um, class registrations and programs and, um, concert, summer concert sponsorships. So I don't know if Carolina has a figure in front of her in terms of our department revenue, but I know that our cost recovery hovers right around thirty percent.
So, but, but we're, we're budgeting three-point-six or three-point-seven million? And how much recovery do we have of that? Or is that the amount after recovery?
No, that is gross expense, not net of revenue.
Okay, and so what is net?
I don't have that in front of me, I'm sorry. We can provide
But you would have that in the revenue side of your budget.
Right, there's several lines of revenue, um, for the fees and services. I could accumulate that for you.
Okay. I, I just, I think that, yeah, I won't go into discussion, so go ahead.
All right.
That's all the questions I have.
Okay, great, great. Colleen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, earlier this month, when we dealt with this before, Noreen, we had listed fifty part-time employees or positions. And now it says seventy? What was the change?
Fifty came from us, which was an old number. And, um, for budgeting purposes, we actually look at full-time equivalents. So that's to, for labor costing, that's the, the number. Whereas, um, obviously, Noreen has, uh, the number of all of the actual, which are a lot of part-timers, and so there were seventy, and that also includes seasonal, um, employees.
All right, and then, um, noted under all the different departments and divisions is a line item, five-two-nine-zero-zero contributions. And what I don't quite get, if you could answer, Noreen. Under youth, there's contributions, and under teens, and under all the other categories, there's nothing. What are contributions?
That's correct. So those contributions are the negotiated amounts that the city pays the school district as part of our joint use agreement. So under youth, the thirty-six thousand one oh one is for, um, the BES programs. And under teens, the fifty thousand is for, uh, is to support the Club Lipman program at Lipman.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, great. Thank you, Noreen. Okay, moving on to central services. So who is central services? Is that going to be you, Carolina?
That's both of us.
Caroline, okay, come on up.
Good evening again. So central services, as you know and has been mentioned, cover citywide services and issues. So things such as grant writing assistance, utilities, phone lines, janitorial services, server support, and some communications, um, team products such as the star and our website. Uh, next slide, please. Um, you can see for fiscal year twenty-six, it's one point four, and fiscal year twenty-seven, one point three. We'll go over the, um, reasons for that. Um, next slide, please. So some of the department highlights we wanted to call out were, um, I mentioned grant writing, which is to the California, um, Public Policy Group. The majority of the grants were written with the assistance of and implementation by the Public Works Department. Uh, so to date, nine hundred thirty-five, a hundred in grants were awarded with one-point-six million pending. The, um, star is here because we are requesting a little bit more for printing a twelve-page issue versus eight to give a little bit more opportunity to share news on the various commissions and committees and their work in city news. And this screenshot is of our Engage Brisbane platform, which has been utilized in a tremendous way recently with the various surveys that we've put forth. Our communication survey went out, um, it's gotten over, it closed with over a hundred and, um, nine participants taking that survey. But the one that's currently open and getting a lot of attention and response is the Seventy Old County Vision and Concept Survey, so that closed at the end of this month. But this is just screenshot of, um, what that tool looks like and how it's been utilized. And we're really happy to see that continue to, to rise and, um, the community being engaged in that. And next slide, we have some of the variances. But as I mentioned, a lot of them cover phone lines, janitorial. Um, it's an added membership for One Shoreline. Um, and the, uh, reduction in onsite, onsite support was mentioned earlier and with further reduction in fiscal year twenty-seven. And cyber's policy that Carolina mentioned earlier. And Laserfish was already, um, a service that we have been, uh, planning to implement, so that reduction is there as well. The City of Brisbane website, I want to speak, um, a little bit more about. This was with our, um, Communications and Engagement Subcommittee that, uh, we got to hear a lot of the feedback that Councilmember Mackin and Kern had, um, envisioned for our website to be a better tool for our residents to receive information. And there have been numerous, um, meetings with our vendor Civic Plus to get that cost to be sizable. And I'm happy to report that, um, with our city manager's, um, support and just really pushing hard on the spender, they've, uh, reduced our implementation costs, um, actually eliminated them for year one. And, um, so what you're seeing is the biggest, um, concession and decrease in their implementation annual fees that our account manager has ever seen in his six years of working with Civic Plus. So we're happy, um, to, um, be able to potentially have a, a new website that's going to be more robust, more able to have a better search functionality, a chatbot feature. Um, also, our agenda management, um, system will be, um, what people have come to expect with our meeting videos going on to the website immediately, um, integrated with our YouTube and Zoom. And so it's not going to require a staff person to even upload that. Um, and so it's just really a lot of things, um, that could be possible. And I mentioned the printing of the star newsletter. Um, that cost from Folter Graphics is, um, there before you. So with that, uh, Carolina and I can take any questions unless you want to add more.
Thank you.
Uh, just wanted to highlight a few areas regarding, uh, some of the IT costs. So in the middle of that last slide, please, if they could put it back up for central service budget changes. Um, so EnSite, when Albert Duro retired, we went, um, back up to three days a week. So this will, um, the reduction is going to, uh, one day per week having a support, even with the, um, having someone on staff because of old equipment. A lot of the equipment we purchased during COVID. And the lifespan is, um, it's pretty old that we have to replace quite a bit. So we will need assistance while the IT person, um, can probably do a lot of it. But we'll, we'll, we're seeking assistance so that, um, there are other operational needs, um, that take place that they can all be addressed. Um, the EnSite server support is increasing. Um, some of the, the items have to do with cyber protection, um, additional server, updating servers and things of that nature. Um, and, and so that's what the increase is. And then the cyber policy special project, we, we do have cyber protection, um, steps in place. However, our insurance coverage, uh, we have cyber insurance coverage, but one of the requirements is to formalize a policy. So that's what this cost is, is putting, making sure that some of the steps that we have is, um, put into, uh, a document with particular requirements. And, um, i- in order to renew the insurance, there's certain components that they require to see, and that's what this policy would be, um, compiling. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Carolina. Uh, questions? Uh, Terry?
Uh, nothing on this section.
Okay, Madison?
None for me.
None for me.
Colleen?
Uh, Carolina, what is Laserfish converted to maintenance?
So in this, uh, current year, I believe, we, we were implementing, uh, Laserfish, and there was a one-time implementation fee. So now it's going into the maintenance phase.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Frank, you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, just want to call, Carolina, thanks for, uh, calling out the Civic Plus stuff. I was looking for that earlier, so thank you. I don't know how I missed that. Um, number two, uh, just under, um, the first line item, communications, cost of the majority of the city telephone lines, we're seeing a twenty-five percent increase in what I think is old technology, or I could be wrong?
Definitely there was an increase, but then it's also, um, moving some of the costs into central services. Um, so we're seeing an increase here. We're actually going to be evaluating our communications plan. Um, we're working, uh, for this coming year to have a, a review and also considering there are additional lines, um, in the annex. So that's additional costs that we're seeing.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. So this is a public hearing, so I don't see any members of the public in the audience. However, we might have some folks, we do have some folks online. So, uh, this is an opportunity to, um, ask or just to provide some comments. Um, so, uh, anybody in the online audience wishing to make a comment or, you know, just even ask a question, and we'll, we'll write that question down. So uh, anybody in the online audience wishing to make a comment or, you know, just even ask a question and we'll, we'll write that question down. To anybody? No. All right, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kern?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Lenz?
Aye. All right, uh, council discussion. So. Who wants to start off? Madison, you want to start?
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, I I just want to commend staff for all of your hard work um, getting the budget prepared. Um, I know this was many, many hours and you thought diligently about what your departments really needed. In my opinion, I mean, obviously, you know, we're projecting a deficit, but I think that. To me, this feels like a rather lean budget and I don't perceive. I haven't seen anything in the budget that leads me to feel like this is an unnecessary expense or ask. I thought, I think that, you know, staff was very thoughtful and has presented something that. Is is a compilation of, you know, what expenses that we are going to need to have, so. I'm in support. I don't have any suggested changes. Um, but of course, I'm one of five, so.
All right, all right. Uh, Frank?
Uh, yeah, I just want to uh, echo what uh, Councilperson Davis said. Uh, thank you to staff for uh, all the hard work in this. I think that these uh, your reporting, at least for my first year going through this, was very transparent. Um, and you were able to answer uh, all the questions that the council had, so I think that was great. I went in thinking that maybe we might be able to squeak out an additional quarter million dollars in savings someplace. Um, but then when Randy was talking about the necessity for the generator, which was going to be one of the big items I was going to talk about tonight and maybe um. Get more clarification on, doesn't look like we've got any flexibility there, but it doesn't look like too much can come out of this budget. It it looks pretty lean in its current presentation. Um, and thank you so much for going through the overtime. Appreciate that. Uh, so right now, um, I feel pretty good about it. I understand we're in a nine hundred thousand and change deficit. Uh, but that's better than we were originally projecting, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Frank. Um, Colleen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How can I say this with without sounding stingy or petty? With all the expenses that are going up and listening to Randy's presentation about really critical things in the city. That are going to cost an arm and a leg that may take ten years to implement. We can't foresee in the next two years what's going to go up and we've seen significant cost increases on everything. Just look at the police budget for vehicle maintenance and fuel. And every time we turn around, look at, look at all the services that we contract out. Landscaping, janitorial, those are all going up. The memberships are all going up. Everything's going up faster than we can catch our breath and react to it. And so when I see small incremental increases in the departments, I'm I'm not chastising anyone. But I think we've got to really tighten things up because this creep is. It's like, what's an extra five, ten thousand here or there? What's an extra twenty thousand here or there? But it's not just ten or twenty thousand. It's all the other increases that are coming that we have no control over. And where are the revenues? We're not the only city that's experiencing budget problems. Most of the peninsula cities, if you follow what's going on. It's the same thing that's been happening since twenty twenty two, where we're dipping in reserves. And other cities are asking, what do we do with this? And yet we're all taking on more and taking on more and what concerns me, if we go back to twenty twenty three. We had a winter storm. Cost how much? Two and a half million? Lots of other repercussions, maybe not all reflected in labor costs. What if we had some sort of major disaster, not just in Brisbane, but in the whole county? And I I think we've got to be prudently aware that there's so much right now that's volatile. We have investments. What's the stock market doing? What happens if all of this happens in one fiscal year? So I don't know how to express it other than to say the the incremental creeping in every single department. Which seems in most given years insignificant, right? Okay, so some things another thousand or five thousand, ten thousand, but if we took every department and add that up. When, as Commissioner Kern is saying, we're looking for, how can we cut back a little bit? We're not really looking at all those incremental changes and I would like to see us do that. And and I would echo, I appreciate Councilmember O'Connell asking about overtime. I understand that that. City labor and the tasks that we have to do are, sometimes you can't help it. It it just has to be somebody there after hours. But everything that we start accumulating goes into long term pension obligations. And that will affect us in the long run. So I think I would ask every department head to be really aware of it. And and I would like to see if it's possible that we have some sort of comprehensive tracking. Every year by department to look at overtime, just to see. It's it's not, it's not to say, oh, you're not doing your job. It it's more to say. What are we doing? How are we managing it? Do we need another full time employee versus overtime? Or maybe it acknowledges that the way that we are parsing out the labor is costing us more than we think. And we need to be aware of it. And I understand sometimes the department heads, you have no choice. You've been given direction and and that's what it is, but it also gives us information that we're not getting. We've asked, I think, for two, three years to see overtime costs. And I understand we're going through some major changes on the accounting systems and I appreciate all that. That Carolina, you and your staff have done and in working with department heads. But I'd like to see more information like that. I think it would help all of us because it's it's, we're somewhat insulated. From looking at things this way and and I think we're going to be forced to actually start doing that. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Colleen. Uh, Terry?
Thank you. I think that this is a better job than we've had in the last couple of years. I think it started with. The COVID years where we weren't really meeting in person and we got a little behind the eight ball as far as. The information we saw in the budget where we could actually look and see where things are coming from. So I think this is a really good um, progression to moving forward with a better. Understanding of where costs are. I think we also though really need to look at where our revenues are. And I think that, you know, when we have enterprise funds, you know, water and sewer, GVMID, the marina. And we look at those and we can see if we had, I I would like to see something. Where we see what we're really spending and what we're taking in side by side as a departmental. Where we know that running the pool maybe is costing us a million dollars. But we're taking in three hundred thousand. Um, and and that goes along with the other programs that we're doing within Park and Rec. And, you know, my biggest concern, and I know that, you know, we can all hope that our revenues are going to be. More than anticipated and our expenses are going to be less. It's not always going to work that way. But we are not planning for our future if we don't have money to set aside for our long term. Liabilities, for our pensions, for, you know, the people that are serving us today, what they're going to be taking, getting tomorrow. Where, you know, those are real, and we have not discussed any doing any of the capital improvements and we're still in the hole. So. I know that most programs in Park and Rec, people who've come used to them. We've already contracted to provide those things for the upcoming year. It's not like we could today say, oh, let's cut this, this, or this. Because we've already contracted with the people who are going to provide that service. But I think moving forward, we're not going to be able to keep providing more, more, more without cost recovery. From those programs. Some of it will be in kind. Where you may not see a direct correlation between. Funds coming in from a program, but it's going to be things that are going to raise your property taxes. And bring in more revenues in other ways. You know, whether it's investing in the marina where maybe you're getting more sales tax from a business that's going in. At the marina that's going to service those people. So it's not always a direct correlation, but we really need to. Think about that and figure out a way that we don't just keep raising our non-recoverable costs. Planning Department, you know, most of the time there, a lot of their stuff is covered by fees that they take in. But we're not seeing that in this budget where we see. Planning Department, you know, and has professional services and all these things that they're spending money on. But we're not seeing what we're getting back towards those services. And I think in a really comprehensive budget review, we would know more about that. And some of it gets covered when we go into a master fee schedule. Where we're looking at what our costs are and what our recovery rate is. And some things, of course, are never going to be recoverable. We can't put a price on having safety. Police and fire, you can't assign a dollar value to that. And maybe you can't assign a dollar value to Park and Rec. But I think we need to start doing that because we're going to get into trouble if we don't. I know that moving forward, that every department head is going to be very. Aware of saving costs where they can during this budget year. And, you know, I'm not saying cutting corners, but just watching where the money's going. But I think we need to lower our expectations for. Our citizens, and I hate to say that, I don't say it lightly, about what to expect about more. Everybody wants more and I'm not sure that we're going to be able to go with this growth. Of services to give everybody more. It's unsustainable. So. I I think they've done a really good job on what we've been given so far. But I have some real concerns about how we're going to do any capital projects. How we're going to cover our liabilities for our long term pensions. You know. It's just really scary to be going into using our reserves to cover our nut and give our people. Extras. Here's my stump speech.
No, I I I appreciate that, Councilmember O'Connell. Yeah, I want to thank all the department heads for doing a fantastic job, working with your staff. To uh, come up with an appropriate budget. Over the years that I've been on the council, you know, and I've worked with a lot of you over the years. You you do take uh, quite, uh, you know, solid care in. Managing the funds that you're allocated and I I think we all appreciate that. Because uh, when you look at the the data over the years, we we tend to come out. Uh, better than what we project and and a lot of that comes from you, uh, you know, making sure that you spend the money wisely. And so uh, we all appreciate that. Carolina, you did a fantastic job putting together this budget. It's uh, very comprehensive. It's, I I feel it's easy to follow. And um, I, it it allowed me to really dive uh, deep into understanding. What uh, goes on with the budget and I appreciate you your open door for me to ask questions. It was very helpful for for me to get a good, a good grounding. Uh, I I also appreciate all the comments from from the council and all the questions that were asked. I think that helps to paint the picture of of where we are and and where we move forward. You know, when I look at Attachment C and, you know, it shows the last three years and. What we projected, what we eventually uh, wound up, uh, you know, uh. Finalizing their, our uh, our budget. Sure, we we've, we've done well with uh, uh, outpacing expenses. But having projected uh, deficits is important for us to all keep in mind and uh, pay attention to. But when uh, when you look at the fund balance, to me, that 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 shows the health of our of our city. And. Sure, no one likes staring into a a budget deficit, a projected one. But when we look at the fund balance, we see how healthy our 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 finances are. And we, as a council, put in our fund. Uh, reserves, our our fund balance, these these three reserves, the recession one, the um. The uh, unanticipated events and then the actual, the annual uh, fluctuation. And and we did that ourselves, right? Just what you're talking about, you know, preparing. And uh, and then, of course, uh, we have those additional restrictions on some of the the fund balance, right? The loans and things like that that we have, but then we're still very solid. And that. That shows a lot about the the strength of our economy and how we spend money in in the city. And when you get the feedback from the community and the citizens. They feel very happy about what they receive. And so that's something that we should all be proud of too. So we must be doing a really good job uh, as a team. And so. I appreciate this, all the work that's been done to to make sure that we're financially sound. So with that, uh, can I get a first and a second to adopt a resolution adopting the annual budget? For fiscal year twenty twenty six and fiscal year twenty twenty seven and making appropriations for the amount budgeted for the city. The successor agency and Housing Authority?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment before we go on.
Okay.
I I really appreciate what uh, Councilmember O'Connell introduced as a concept. I think it really would be helpful to see what is offsetting the budget for each department. And and I think that would be really mindful for all of us and. I understand, um, Mr. Mayor and and talking about, you know, we we look very solid. But when we're year after year after year using reserves, I have to honestly disagree. Because we've got to get out of that rut. We can't keep doing that. That is not healthy. It's it's like using your credit cards to pay your bills. We have to find a way to move forward in that. As Randy would tell you, the things that are looming, that are being defrayed are serious. They're very serious. So we can say everything's fine today, but we're we're then not paying attention. It's like. It's like saying I paid all my bills and I had to use the credit card. Of course, my car is falling apart and it might break tomorrow and I have no way to get to work. So we have these looming things and I'm not saying that to depress anyone. I I think it's it's very healthy. Both for us and for our residents to understand where we're at.
I, yeah, I totally agree with you there and and that's why, you know, I I look at the ending fund balance. So if you, if you look at the ending fund balance for twenty two, twenty three, it was uh, fifteen point six million. And then the fund balance for twenty three, twenty four was seventeen point two. Our ending fund balance this year for twenty four, twenty five is eighteen four.
Right, but we're still not getting a lot of these projects done. And that, and that's a concern.
Can I make a motion to extend the meeting to ten o'clock?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Okay, uh, roll call vote, please.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kern?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Lenz?
Aye, yeah, no, I think we're definitely all on the same page that there are things that we need to take care of. And we have been moving or, you know, pushing things down the road. And we have been moving, you know, pushing things down the road that need to be addressed now. And, and so, you know, how, how, how do we, you know, receive the money for those things? And we'll need additional ways of getting revenue. And but we have our mid-year review coming up and that'll be a great time to evaluate where we are. And we'll have more data that will come in that can support what we are going to, to budget.
I, I think we've done a credible job, not us just as a council, but with all of you, the staff, in trying to get us through this time. But I think it's important, as Councilmember O'Connell mentioned, as we have residents who come and say, I'd like an art center, I'd like this, I'd like this remodeled, I'd like this, I'd like that. Can we do this? How about a new community center? And it's very hard for them to understand why we can't do this when we keep telling them everything's fine. I think it's better to be realistic and say, we need for you to work with us because we're managing to keep this going without laying off employees or having any major reduction of services. But as, as Councilmember O'Connell said, it's not sustainable. We have to come to grips with that. And I think we're not doing a service to our residents if we don't make that clear. They need to understand it. They're part of it. And it, it just makes us look foolish if it looks like we're denying them things that they want to see happen. I, I think they're adult enough to take this information and see what we're, we're trying to cope with. And it's a testimony to our staff and departments that they're doing the best they can with this. And I, I, I don't know how Randy doesn't lose sleep at night on some of the things that are crippled together with Band-Aids to try to hold it and hoping nothing happens.
Yes, I, I, I agree with you on that. All right, so we have, do we have a motion to approve the?
I'm not sure we did, but I will make the motion to approve the budget for fiscal year 2026.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Kern.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Lentz.
Aye, all right. Can I get a first and a second to adopt the Guadalupe Valley Municipal Improvement District Resolution Adopting the Annual Budget for Fiscal Year 2026 and Fiscal Year 2027 and Making Appropriations for the Amounts Budgeted?
So moved.
We went out of order, but, but we'll do that. I'll second that.
This is what's in my.
Then we need to do the housing authority.
Let's see, you know what? This is what's in my script here, but I, I think it.
So we can go ahead with that.
Yeah, thank you.
I mean, I'm just saying.
Yeah, okay. I know, this is what's in my script here, so I'm just reading off this thing. So for the Guadalupe Valley Municipal Improvement District, we had a motion to move forward.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Kern.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Lentz.
Aye, okay. So, uh, let's see, adopt resolution adopting the annual budget for, let's see, we did that.
It's for the successor agency.
Okay, number I, got it, got it. Yeah, okay, adopt resolution adopting the annual budget for fiscal year 2026, 6 and fiscal year 2027 and making appropriations for the amounts budgeted for the city, the successor agency, and housing authority.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Kern.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Lentz.
Aye, all right, thank you, everybody. Okay, staff reports, item case, city managers report to the updates, upcoming activities. Christina?
Yeah, thanks for your patience, as Jeremy has been out ill, quite ill this week. Just a couple of things, the 70 county old, uh, Old County Road Survey closes on the 30th. So far, we've received approximately 180 responses. So we would encourage our community to take the survey before it closes. Also, nonprofit lyrical opposition will have a free event at Mission Blue this Saturday from 6 to 8 to celebrate their 10-year anniversary. This includes live hip-hop performances, spoken word and poetry, independent short films, and local vendors. And then lastly, on Monday, from 5:30 to 7:30, Orchard Partners is hosting their second open house for the proposed quarry project. The open house will take place at the former Trove site at 240 Valley Drive. And for more information, residents are encouraged to call Kit Cole at 818-822-6378. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much, Christina. Okay, item L, Mayor and Council Matters. So we have the recruitment for City Committee and Commissions. Staff report, please.
Mayor, Mayor and Councilmember, staff is recommending that the City Council consider starting recruitment for seats on City Committee and Commissions. And if you could please direct staff on the recruitment timeline specifically. So most recently, we have received resignation letters from Idea Committee member Leila Khalil and complete Streets Safety Committee member Linda Detmer. As of last night, we also received notice that OSEC Committee Member Barbara Ebel will also be resigning from her position. So due to these resignations, terms expiring by January of 2026 and enfold seats, staff can begin and shall begin recruiting volunteers to fill 18 seats on city committees and commissions. The three members that actually resigned their terms end as of January 2026. So it might, so what the direction that I would need from Council today, this evening, is whether or not you'd want me to fill those three seats that are due to the resignations or if you would like to wait and recruit all 18 seats at the same time for 2026 or, you know, end of January 2026.
Okay, so again, the three seats that are missing right now are where?
Complete Streets, Idea, and OSEC.
Okay, so they're all missing one.
Yeah, and their terms end January 2026, all three.
And they would be up anyways.
So in six months.
Yep, in six months.
So is council okay about waiting until January and just doing, doing them all?
Yes.
I think that'd be fine.
That makes sense to me.
Okay.
Okay.
There you go. I'd like to try to get to do, to do this, it's such a lift, you know, that it makes sense to do it like once a year if we can help it, unless somebody is really down.
Well, there's 18, I'm sure that, that number will probably grow.
We can begin recruitment like in the fall.
Right.
We're gonna need to do it like probably really early.
Yeah, and then we could, we could start the launch with our Brisbane 101 kind of.
Yeah, so you have this Brisbane 101 program thing. That is part of the process to recruit and get people interested. So we could probably sign up people during that time as well.
We could provide like opportunity, like applications at that time as well.
What does the council think about doing interviews before seats have expired? Because I think what happens is like by time we get around to it, we, we, we come back from the new year, we schedule the interviews, we have a council meeting where we could swear everyone in. Like a lot of times we're into February or sometimes March. And I wonder how it would be to do recruitment, to do interviews, provided it's like not in the middle of the holidays. If we started recruiting like in September and then they know that their term starts January.
Mr. Mayor, if I may comment?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So what Councilmember Davis said has, has kind of been something that, that's been going through my mind over and over. I know there was a point, Ingrid, been a couple of years ago, where you were trying to get all of the terms expiring and renewed in January for all the committees and commissions, which would make sense because it's a little odd when you have a chair of a committee taking office in July, August, September. It really should be the beginning of the year where a new committee all at once decides who the chair is instead of, we get all this, the stragglers. And part of it is, it always ends up where we try to recruit and then it goes to January and we don't have enough. We go to February, go to March, go to April. What if we start really early? Really early, then we have the flexibility to decide when to schedule the interviews. But at least we, we solicit the interest. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, I think that's what.
That makes a ton of sense.
Yeah.
May I make a comment as well?
Yes, absolutely, sorry.
Councilperson Mackin, 100% that makes sense. We need to start at a grassroots level in terms of our recruitment exercise. While I applaud the staff for Brisbane 101 in the agenda, I have participated in something very close to this, asking somebody who might be vaguely interested to come spend six hours, six hours on a Saturday, learning about, I'll call it relatively dry material that they're going to have to get through as a commissioner. Now, now I'm trying to turn people up here, I'm trying to turn people on. The point is, is that we need some sort of recruitment tool that inspires people to get involved. We can layer in all these Brisbane 101 details later. But we need to sort of have, I don't want to call it a party for lack of a better terms, but we need to incentivize and motivate people to get involved. Again, people need the qualifications to do the job. They have to want to do the job. And they have to be inspired to get involved. And so we need to accomplish those things before we start heading down the path of putting together a classroom-style training. So I think immediate and early recruitment is the most important thing. And I don't think it's a bad idea to actually sit down, put some thought into this. And it's actually a multi-year approach. We're a little bit late now for January 2026 to do anything really impactful. But I think that there's something here. And I was going through recruitment videos. You guys, I go down these rabbit holes. Heineken Beer has an award-winning like recruitment video where all they did is inspire. They didn't talk about the job at all, they just inspired people. We need to be doing a little bit of that. That's my piece, I'm done, thank you.
May I add one?
I know that a lot of the, there are a lot of tables at Day in the Park run by committees. And they talk about the work that they do and with citizens. And I think that would be a great place, like if somebody was interested in learning more about how they could join that committee, there could be like a signup list. And, you know, Ingrid or someone, the chair maybe even could reach out and say, hey, if you're interested in this committee, this is what we do, this is what our meetings are. We'd love to invite you to learn more. I think it could be cool to have like something fun, like an ice cream social that's hosted by our committees and commissions. And, you know, maybe there's the ice cream table is OSEC and the toppings table is, you know, another group. And then the cup or cone is another table and the whipped cream is another table or something. And you could go around and, or you could learn, you could just have a plate, you could have an event that's fun where there are people who are on those committees and commissions who can talk about what they do or even have like little presentations, a little five-minute blurb. And people who are interested, you know, could apply.
I think that's, those are all great ideas. Or, you know, the cute little flashy video that came with Park and Rec today that, you know, had, had upbeat music and, you know, people doing the right thing and having fun. You know, you could do a short infomercial, so to speak, of that that also could help.
Maybe our marketing, do we have, like, we have a communication subcommittee, maybe this is something you want to noodle on.
If, if I could just. Yes, one other thing. What we don't want to do is attract people to committees and commissions that they have no idea of really what they're going to be doing. They get there and they quit. We've had a lot of that.
We have.
And part of it is, there was a time several years back where some of the committees, I know OSEC did it when they completed a project, they came here to the council and they described what the project was, how they approached it, and what they accomplished. We don't do that anymore. I know Caroline's talked about putting articles in the Star. I think the public needs to know what these committees do. They don't know what they're getting into. And so it sounds like, oh, a good resume item. And then they find out it takes work and that's where you see the turnover. So I think part of it is if there's something really that people can grasp what these committees do, we might have a better chance of retention. Because we don't want to pour a whole lot of time and money into just a, a constant turnover. And that's really hard on people serving on committees when there's this just blistering turnover and you just feel like we're not getting anywhere.
Excellent comments.
You have a hand raised.
Yeah, I, I see that. So Michelle? You can, you let it go.
I had two comments. One is, let's see, we could say, hey, do you love to read? Read really serious sad stuff? Do I? DIR till you're blue in the face.
That'll get him.
The comment I was, had my hand raised for, it was oral communications. Shall I just do it now while I'm talking? Sorry, I don't have much of a voice, but I really think that what Colleen said and what Terry said about the future and the obligations that we have and that we need to face them sooner rather than later is really important because previous councils kicked the can down the road in terms of infrastructure for water and sewer. And now that is one of the biggest complaints I hear from everybody is how much they're paying for water and sewer infrastructure. And that's because, oh, we felt sorry for people, we felt sorry for the seniors, you know, et cetera. So we just kept kicking it down the road. And now I'm a senior and I'm paying through the nose for infrastructure that didn't get paid for in the last 20, 15, whatever, years. So I think that that was, that was a harsh lesson that we're paying for now, individuals are. So I appreciate the thought about taking care of the worst problems as soon as you can. And if that means we have a few less amenities to go around, I think that's okay. I mean, it's really a tough call, but you have to look at each amenity and say, how many people are we serving there? You know, 10, 20, 30, 60 versus the entire population of Brisbane who is paying through the nose for water and sewer now, infrastructure. So that's, that's really, it's a hard lesson. But I think we need to, if we're going to dip into our resources, we need to dip into the resources and take care of the problems that will, will happen. It's inevitable, like sea level rise, et cetera. So thanks, thank you so much for your hard work and, and also to the staff for the budget they put together. But we really need to take that as a cautionary tale. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Michelle. So Ingrid, the council has provided a lot of, yeah, really good feedback. And so, yeah, if you could put something together for us, you know, lay out kind of a game plan and then perhaps come back with some dates that, that make sense for us to have the interviews. I think, I think we all agree that they should be earlier than later and, and having a nice amount of time to get interest in the community to, to sign up. That would be, that'd be fantastic.
Thank you.
All righty, so moving on to let's see, okay, so under Mayor, Council Matters, we also have countywide assignments and subcommittee reports. Anybody have any countywide assignments?
Nothing important.
No.
Okay, I guess, Councilmember Mackin.
Okay, before you groan, I'll make it as short as possible. All right, CCG. You may have heard about the 10192 Connector Project, very controversial. It's really just in a planning stage. It would have a flyover coming from the East Bay to 101, connecting directly with the express lanes northbound and southbound. The controversy was the original firm hired to look at it wanted to take eminent domain on 31 residential homes in the city of San Mateo and destroy them, which created a furor and some pushback. So they're now studying alternatives. The project's still in a planning stage, so there, there's nothing even concrete about going forward or what that will look like. But if, you'll hear more about it. Second part is the regional public transit measure. You've heard about that from me before. This would be a tax. This would be a tax, a sales tax, and the amount is still up in the air. C-CAG had proposed 10 amendments, and those amendments were with C-CAG withholding support because they felt we were not protecting our interests in the county. And so we've gone round and round studying it. C-CAG would like every single peninsula city to weigh in on it. So I've had to make a request with our city manager to put this on an upcoming agenda. We need a briefing on the pros and cons. It's, it's rather complicated. It's not really simple. We have a C-CAG board meeting on July 30th for a final vote. So we want to have some idea how Brisbane stands on this. Our input will really be pretty important. And if this measure passes in the state legislature, it would be put on the November 2026 ballot on whether voters would choose to approve it.
All right, thank you.
Just a point of order, it's past 10 o'clock. I don't know if you want to extend the meeting further.
Okay, yeah, how about another 10 minutes if I can get a motion?
Five.
Okay, I'm just putting it out there.
10:07.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kern?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell? And Mayor Lentz?
Aye. Okay, yeah, I had two countywide meetings, had a Calcommute.org meeting this morning. Pretty simple, just budget, things like that. I had a Heart Board meeting. That was very interesting. And I will be reaching out to you, Madison, to talk about potentially, you know, with our housing subcommittee, looking at preservation opportunities with Heart. So what they're exploring right now is partnering with cities who have affordable housing funds and purchasing multi-unit apartment complexes, somewhere between eight and 20 units. And then over time, those units that are right now, of course, they're market rate, but, but a lot of those, those smaller apartments that we have in town, say, on San Bruno, are already affordable just in nature. But some folks, you know, are fairly well off, who live there too. And so it's a really interesting program and I'd, I'd like to bring it forward to our subcommittee and to explore in greater depth and then potentially bring it back to the full council. So that is it. Anybody like to report out on upcoming subcommittee meetings?
I'll just, I'll just say I had a airport land use committee meeting today and we did not find the new Tanfran development as consistent, but we're sure that San Bruno is going to override us on that because they're allowing housing in the 70-decibel area, which is not consistent with state requirements. And last night I had a airport roundtable, technical working group meeting. I am now the chair of that. And that's being held about once a month or every month, other month here in Brisbane.
All right, good for you. Thank you for taking on that leadership role. Okay, written communications, item N. Ingrid, please.
We received correspondence from Elaine Straw regarding charging rate increases in Mission Blue Rec, Chris Florkowski regarding Commute.org shuttle, Rheta McCullough regarding rape case unsolved leads to civil rights being violated as well as nothing being done about the evidence being processed for conviction of the terrorists, and Kircher regarding San Bruno, San Bruno Mountain Watch and the quarry. Mimi Iverson, again regarding the quarry. Kristen Mercer regarding the quarry. And Ross Dyke's dangerous situation for pedestrians at Brisbane Elementary.
All right, great. Thank you so much, Ingrid. Oral communications, number two. If anyone online would like to make a comment, this is your time. I don't see anyone raising a hand, so we will adjourn our meeting at 10:06. And thank you, everybody, for a great meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Bye, Frank.